Good evening, everybody. How many are lined up outside yet? Is there a handful? So, we're gonna go ahead and start this meeting. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona. It'll be held January 15, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And I just wanna apologize for our sort of inadequate council chambers. We don't have enough room for large crowds like this, and I'm very, very sorry. So, I don't know which item. I'm assuming you're all here for the CDBG funds. It's first on the agenda, so we'll hopefully get to that as quickly as possible and get you outta here, so you can hopefully not be wet if you're standing outside and home to your families. First item of business tonight is roll call. If we could please have the clerk take the roll.
Councilmember Althouse?
Here.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Howdegie?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here. Next is pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're not already and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. I think that was the loudest pledge I've ever heard here. Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Counsel, do we have anything to share today?
I just wanted to share a quick update. I talked about the motorcycle run that happens every January 1st where the motorcycle community stepped up to help Rainbow Acres. I had to think of the name, Rainbow Acres. Even though we posted in the newspaper that we raised a little $2,100, we actually got up to $2,350. So, we were able to give all of that money to Rainbow Acres to help them out with the ranchers out there.
Fantastic. Thank you. Yes, please.
If nobody else.
Any other councilmembers, though? Vice Mayor?
All right. I'm just gonna take a brief moment to thank everybody. Many of you here know this is gonna be my last city council meeting. I've stepped, I'll be stepping down the end of this month as a city council member, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for those who supported me through this. Thank everybody that was there and voted for me. I apologize for leaving so quickly. The newspaper was pretty clear about my reasons for stepping down, but it's been an amazing learning experience for me in numerous fashions, numerous fashions. I will really regret having to make this decision, but I made it for the right reason. I will miss knowing what's going on in my community. I'm very nosy that way. I won't miss the vitriol and the politics that's going on, but I will miss the people. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for the time that I've had here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's been a good year.
Been a good year.
Thank you. Okay, any other councilmembers? City manager, have you anything to report tonight?
I do. Couple things. So, on Sunday, January 13, Parks and Recreation hosted, I think, for pink pickleball tournament. Thirty-two players and 15 volunteers raised over $430 from the raffle, collected over $1,000 for registration fees, and along with other donations, a grand total of $1,442 to support finding the cure for breast cancer. So, thank you to everybody who helped out with that. Also, the Cottonwood Public Library, along with the Verde Valley Astronomy Club, will be presenting a solar viewing party on Saturday, the 19th of this month, from 2:00 to 4:00. There will be a special telescope available for the public to view the sun safely, and you can learn about solar sunspots. This event will take place at the county park behind the library. Accessible parking will be available north of the Yavapai County Health Department. Also, would like to start something to let you know about upcoming board and commission meetings. The Cottonwood Library Board will be meeting on Wednesday, the 16th, at 5:00 over at the library. Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, January 22nd, at 5:00 at the Cottonwood Recreation Center Conference Room. The Historic Preservation Commission will be also meeting on Wednesday, the 23rd, at 6:00 PM here, and Planning and Zoning Commission on Monday, January 28th, at 6:00 PM, also here.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next we roll in the call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and we limit comments to a five-minute time period. So, I have a few folks here that have filled out a form to speak during Call to the Public, and there are yellow forms in the back. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to speak during Call to the Public for an item that's not on the agenda, please fill out a form. If you haven't already, just raise your hand and we'll get you up front. I have a gentleman, or excuse me, Reverend Dr., is it Wendy Davis?
Yes, speaking here for the CDBG.
I see here you have homelessness and water reclamation. Are these two separate issues?
Well, they're part of the C...
DBG. Okay, then we'll get you, we'll call you. I didn't know if there was two separate issues or the same.
They're connected.
Very good. Then we'll call you up later when that item's on the agenda. Yes?
There's a lady.
Okay. You can hand that up here and we'll get you up. We have a, is it Mike Sullivan for Airport Noise? Are you here? Please, step on up, sir. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, my name's Mike Sullivan, and I live in Pine Shadows, part of Cottonwood. And the reason I'm here tonight, I'm representing Ruth Edwards, who is the lead on the airport community citizens' action group that was formed back in August of this last year when the noise issue from the Cottonwood Airport started to really become well beyond normal. And what we discovered at that time is that there was a lot of flight schools that were coming in, especially from other areas. This would be Prescott, Deer Valley, and others, sending their pilots over here to do training, and they do touch-and-go operations that just continue to circle around through the existing pattern. And doing that, they're upsetting the lives of numerous people throughout the community. For the most part, everyone to the north of the airport, which would be runway 32, and that's where you go up where the new complex of vineyards is going in with about 600 homes. And then you have Pine Shadows, you have Mingus Shadows, you have Clarkdale, and then as you go to the east, you have the Verde Villages and these areas that are all impacted. And it's quite a large swath of people. And the problem is, we don't seem to have much of an opportunity. We've been working with the Airport Commission for the last four months, and every time we start to get some headway on this and get some progress, such as the FAA approved a new flight pattern for the planes to go on, but then they bring in all the pilots that are local and stuff or from other areas, and they bring them in and say, "Why, this is unsafe," and shoot us down. We're going over to the flight schools, the committee is, in addition to a couple of the commissioners, and meet with the flight schools, see if we can do anything about it. But these are baby steps that we're taking. It's not gonna really change the problem. And the thing is, the town of Clark, Cottonwood, seems to market itself as an environmentally nice place to move to and live at, and quiet, dark skies. But the thing is, the reality is, for retirement folks and also people growing families, if they're in that airport pattern at all, what they're doing is finding out just the opposite is happening to them. Because, for one thing, the navigation agreement, like Vineyards has to sign too, that's saying, in other words, you gotta acknowledge that you're gonna be bombarded with all these plane noise right at the end of the runway, in addition to Pine Shadows, all these other areas I just mentioned. And it's just gonna be a larger, growing problem, especially when you look at the fact we just signed up a new fixed-base operator to come in, and he's planning on putting in the big tanks that are gonna be able to take care of the jet turbines, and the plane noise will only get worse as we go forward. So, what the reality of this is, what we're trying to do is bring this now to the council's attention, just for the fact that we're not complete working with the commission yet, because every time we get somewhere, it kinda gets tabled for another opportunity, but it's not gonna be too much longer when they've gotta make a decision, because it's really the wolf garden hen house over there. Their pilots and their garden pilots, and we're really getting nowhere. But we'd like to address this with the council in future meetings, and that's why I'm here tonight, just to let you know, formalize the complaint and the problem and the swath of it, when you've got a very small segment of the population that is pilots, and they're impacting negatively the lives of thousands of people in this Cottonwood-Verde Valley area. So, we've been working, like I say, since August on the issue altogether, but our intent is to be able to bring to you some solutions. And one of the things even that's been brought up, 'cause we've been working with Morgan Scott with the Airport Commission too, along with the commissioners, and Morgan's done a great job of keeping this all together for us and giving both sides an opportunity to be able to present their cases. But we can't seem to beat them at their own game there. That's why we need more of an impartial jury to be able to listen to this. So, that's the reason why I'm here tonight, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Appreciate it. Sullivan, I'm sorry, did I say Williams? I meant Sullivan. Excuse me. Okay, we have another here. There's no agenda item listed, so I'm assuming you wanna speak during Call to the Public. It's Mike Lange or Lange? Is this for an item which is not on the agenda tonight, sir?
That's correct.
Okay, welcome. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Lange. I'm here tonight with my wife Brenda and some other residents from Mesquite Springs, a new development that backs up to 40 vacant acres off of Willard Street, just down here. We've been here about four and a half years. About roughly two years ago, we, the last time I was at one of these meetings, there was an agreement from the property owner to put in agricultural land, you know, make it into a farm and have the high school kids come out, and they put up a barbed wire fence right out near the property line, and we were told by the owner that there would be work done to prevent the water runoff coming down into our yards, bringing a lot of mud and whatnot. That has never materialized. We've been responsible for cleaning up our own, the mess from up above. And also, we were told in a friendly, congenial meeting, and we've been excited about this whole project. We've even volunteered to help out once it was established, but it's really hasn't gone anywhere. All the cleaning, the brooms that they did have all grown back. There is some parts of it that have been, looks like they've been worked on, but there's also big piles of brush and dirt. Some of the erosion that's taken place is affecting the neighborhood next to us in the trailer park. Water is rushing down there. We have videos, if you'd like to see them, and it's quite a lot of water. And there's where the fence was, barbed wire fence was put in, there's about, there's an elevation change down to our property line to about six or seven feet, and the owner had said at the time, she didn't want anything to do with that. We could improve it, 'cause it backed right up to our own properties, and the part that was affected by my property, we put in gravel and some red mulch and some plants and just spruced it up a little bit, so it didn't just look like weed and mud. And this past monsoon, we had all this mess that we did get cleaned up, but when we contacted the owner, she became very defensive and didn't seem willing to honor what she had told us face-to-face in a congenial meeting, and now it seems to be moving into an adversarial. We don't want that. With the original vision, we loved, and that's what we want, and we want to keep with the promises that were made, and we think it'd be a wonderful thing, but it doesn't seem to be going anywhere. And plus, you know, if it's not done before the next monsoon, we're gonna be responsible for the cleanup again. So, I'm just bringing it to attention. I know there's been attempts to send emails and things, but we haven't been getting any attention at all. So, that's much.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. We'll follow, we'll follow up with you. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda tonight?
Just my three Mesquites.
No? Okay. Then we will move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meetings of December 4, 2018, and December 18, 2018. I would motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, moved.
Seconded.
Okay, mayor made the motion, vice mayor seconded it, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved, and we move on then to the consent agenda. There's two items on the consents agenda tonight. The following items are to be considered routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilmember or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So, two items again, we have renewal of agreement with Verde Valley Weed Control for Weed Control and Eradication Services. Item two is Resolution Number 2976, approving an extension and revision of the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for public transportation services. Is there any item that a councilmember would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Any item a member of the public would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, councilmember Hulse made the motion, and councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Clerk, city clerk, if you could, please read Resolution Number 2976 by title only.
Resolution Number 2976, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving an extension and revision to the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County, approved on August 20th, 2013, to provide public transportation services for Yavapai County residents. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, new business. We move on to what we've all been waiting for tonight, which is a public hearing regarding proposed projects being considered for the city's anticipated community development block grant funding for the 2019 funding cycle. And just before we get started, folks, I just wanna ask everyone to please be calm and respectful during the meeting. I know this is, there's a lot of money on the table, and there's a lot of people that are vying for the money, and people that support agencies that are vying for the money. But we're not at the movies, so please just try to keep, keep quiet, and I don't wanna hear any applause, because there's going to be a winner and there's going to be many losers. I don't mean to say losers, but many that, that don't get the funding. All of you are winners in my eyes. Let me, let me be clear. You're winners because you're here tonight. But, but my point is this, is that I, you know, again, we're, we just need to be respectful, and it's a very difficult decision for this council to make. We've all reviewed the applications. We're all facing a very difficult decision tonight. But for those agencies that went through this process and filled out the paperwork, it represents hours of your time, and I know that many of you are already stretched very thin and have many other things, commitments to meet, and the fact that you took time out to fill out this application and go through this process means a lot to me, and it means a lot to the community and the people that you represent. Unfortunately, we're not able to fund but one agency or project tonight with this money. It's something that's happened, I think, for the last two or three funding cycles. They used to allow us to split these funds up and fund many different projects. That's not the case anymore. They're shoehorning us into one project, and it's, it's a lot of money for some of our smaller rural agencies to manage. So, unfortunately, that's what we're faced with, and again, we are faced with a difficult decision tonight, so please help us in making that decision. Mr. Ellis, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Good evening. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, it is a public hearing for CDBG funds for the 2019 cycle. The city's eligible every four years for these funds. This year, this next cycle, it's approximately $330,000. Could go up 5% to 10%, plus or minus. That'll be determined at a later date. There was a public hearing on December 4th to put potential projects on the record. There was five that were presented that evening, and five subsequent applications submitted for this hearing tonight. Brief rundown, Parks Recreation, Open Space, and Wayfinding Master Plan Irrigation Design and Irrigation Installation for Riverfront Park, Verde Valley Senior Center Restoration, Verde Valley Habitat for Humanity Restore Improvements, Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Transitional Housing Program, and the Old Town Activity Park Improvements. There are representatives here from each application to give you more information, answer any questions you may have. Real quick, if you don't mind, I would like to read two email-submitted comments for different projects with even our staff to be read on the record tonight. One is from Mr. Bob Rothrack, a citizen of Cottonwood. Homelessness has become a big problem in Cottonwood and our nation. Losing your home can happen quite quickly. A job layoff or sudden serious medical condition can bankrupt a person, leaving them unable to pay rent. Family or friends may be far away or unable to take them in. How does someone in this situation get on their feet again? The Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Transitional Housing Program is an answer. It offers direct aid to the segment of our population rather than wishing they would disappear. This project will provide a path to a secure and productive life for deserving applicants. Please fund this proposal with the available CDBG funds. Thank you for your consideration. The other one is from James Perry with Yavapai College. Yavapai College Verde Valley Campus values our good neighbor relationship with the City of Cottonwood. From the municipal purple pipeline bringing reclaimed water to the southwest wine center vineyard, to the increasing connectivity of social and recreational trails in the West Mingus Avenue Project, Yavapai College works collaboratively with City of Cottonwood to bring educational, economic development, and cultural opportunities to the community. Yavapai College embraces City of Cottonwood's proposed project for community development block grant funds featuring a community-wide Parks, Open Space, Recreation, and Wayfinding Master Plan. The benefit of an irrigation plan for Riverfront Park, implementation of Phase 1, and the installation of key wayfinding signs in the community are each immediately relevant undertakings. This initiative fosters a sense of place, which is critical to Cottonwood's sustainability and vitality, and adds value to the regional affordable housing market for post-secondary students in Verde Valley.
Very good.
If you have any questions for me, I can answer, or if you'd like to hear from the applicants on the projects.
Before we move forward, do we have any questions for staff on, on anything, on the process, on, okay? And I think what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and move forward with hearing from the representatives of each of the projects in the order that they're listed in our packet. And for those folks that come up to present on behalf of your organization or project, if you would, please speak clearly and loudly into the mic so that the folks in the far back can hear. Again, all apologies on behalf of the council for the, for the council chambers that we have. They are sometimes inadequate for meetings like this, so please just be patient with us as we work through this. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ellis. Okay, so first up is Parks Recreation Open Space and Wayfinding Master Plan Irrigation Design and Irrigation Installation for Riverfront Park. And before you begin, Mr. Allen, just the way we'll roll through this, folks, is we'll go ahead and hear from each of the applicants, and then we'll go ahead and hear from all the folks that have filled out a form tonight, hear from the public, and then the council will continue its conversation, make a decision. So, go ahead.
Mayor, council, and the folks in the crowd, it's a pleasure to see this much community engagement. We should give away $330,000 every council meeting. Our participation will probably go up. I got a chance to talk to our, our library manager today, get some statistics from him, and according to the American Community Survey, there are 2,000 kids in Cottonwood under the age of 18 in the annex portion, and 5,362 within Cottonwood service area.
You'll need, you'll just need to speak up, please. Thank you.
All right. COCSD reports that child behavioral issues have increased by 35%. MUHS reports that 51% of their enrolled enrollment qualifies for Title I services, and for COCSD, 81% of their enrollment qualifies for Title I services. Our campaign, I think we've affectionately dubbed it the "I Love Cottonwood" campaign. If you talk to your youth in the, in the area, I would, I would challenge you and say that there's a large majority that say they're not proud to call Cottonwood home. This affects our culture and ripples through our economy. During council's retreat, recurring topics such as growing aging-in-place population, affordable housing, sustainable economy, job growth, sense of place, community pride, and a struggling population were expressed. Recently, the National Parks and Recreation Association reported on their 2019 trends and predicted that cities are refocusing on investing in themselves after the Great Recession. Government does not create jobs, they build the public spaces that induces a sense of place that ripples through the economy. Our project is multifaceted. We were able to get, we would be able to get a lot done for the money. We would start with a plan that would be rooted in citizen engagement. It would create a vision for the next 10 to 20 years on what this area is gonna be. That plan would then focus down on doing an irrigation plan for Riverfront Park. As you all know, we recently completed the reclamation plan for around $14 million and some change. When that water's available, we wanna be able to smoothly transition to utilizing that, that resource. It's a vital resource for this area, and be able to create these green spaces that the families in this area are so desperately looking for. In addition to that, we would also start implementing wayfinding signs and directional signage throughout the community. Picture going into Old Town Cottonwood in a large archway over the street saying, "Welcome to the heart of Arizona's wine country." Sometimes I think the locals don't know where the heart of Arizona's wine country, but everybody else does. In 2017, council adopted your strategic initiatives, and goal 2.5 was adopted, and it was called Fund Parks Recreation Master Plan. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Allen from council?
Just, just on the technical side, it does say an agency operations budget and a project budget is submitted, but I don't see any extra. Was that an additional thing, or is it within the application?
I think it would be an additional document that once council identifies what your priorities are, would be submitted through the process moving forward, because obviously this is the City of Cottonwood proposed project.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
I believe next is the Verde Valley Senior Center Restoration. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll need you to speak just as loud as you can into that mic, please.
Oh, really?
Yes. Watch what I ask for, right?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Ed Al, everyone else. Okay. My name's Helene Bremner. I'm the executive director of the Verde Valley Senior Center. The Verde Valley Senior Center, the building located at 500 East Cherry Street in Cottonwood, was constructed in 1917 and opened for use in 1918. The building is now a century-old historic landmark and a gem of a renovation project for the city of Cottonwood, where a 501(c)(3) nonprofit agency. The first non-use was in... agency. The first non-use was in 1918 when the Clement's Horse Melter was built as a warehouse for the United Verde Extension Mining Company. Later, the building was used to repair steam locomotives that hauled ore from Jerome. I have to be careful how I say that. You've got it. Anyway, the original ornate riveted iron roof trusses were left visible throughout the building to preserve the historic value and integrity of the original structure. The iron framework was infilled with brick, with every sixth row being cross-bonded and mortared with experimental concrete from that era. Now, that's important to say it wasn't built around the brick walls because there's no rebar in those walls, only in the lentils above the windows that you'll find this wonderful one-inch twisted rebar, but not in the walls. It's the I-beam, steel I-beams that support the brick in that building, the walls. Okay. And I think this is important that you understand how it was built. And old photographs taken in 1917 during construction depict the railway lines running either side of the building. There was a repair pit and a boom that lifted the engines out of the locomotives and a roundhouse to get them back on track. Now, some families, we know, have lived a part of this building's history, such as Yavapai County Supervisor Randy Garrison's grandfather, Ursel Garrison, who purchased the property in the early 1940s and used the building for grain storage. In the 1950s, Yavapai County obtained the building and property to use as storage truck and road equipment repairs. And it was a wreck. It was the biggest eyesore in Cottonwood. Belier Trucking Company parked their cement trucks on the property and perked up, I mean, picked up the first load of concrete from Phoenix Cement Plant in Clarkdale and hauled it to Page for the construction of Glen Canyon Dam. And this occurred between 1959 and 1964. So it's been an important part of the history, everything that's happened between here and Glen Canyon Dam. In October 2003, the Verde Valley Senior Citizens Association leased the property from Yavapai County and applied for CDBG funds to start a renovation project. Other townships in the Verde Valley committed some of their CDBG funds for future years in order to recapture the past and establish a senior center which could meet the growing needs for senior nutrition, activities, and the Meals on Wheels program. In October 2007, Verde Valley Senior Citizens Association purchased the property from Yavapai County. That was after using weekend warriors from, from, that were let out of prison, who helped me bring the old building up to par so we could sell it and then purchase this one. The senior center serves as a hub for all local communities. While our primary objective is to serve senior citizens aged 60 and older, 51% are low to moderate income, as mandated by Congress. We actually provide, we actually provide services to all ages regardless of income, such as educational opportunities, job training, activities, and community events, banquets, weddings, and wakes, counseling for combat veterans, AARP tax aid services to all ages, and meeting, and a meeting place for a variety of local organizations. In summary, a sense of livelihood, renewed spirit from having been there, and a new sense of purpose evolves from having visited or attended a function at the Verde Valley Senior Center. We give hope to those who need it. We serve the community in countless ways, and we raise most of the money to make it happen. In our estimation, more than 4,000 individuals, unduplicated, receive a service every year. 2,500 of those are low-to-moderate income individuals. We operate within the guidelines of Yavapai County Health Department, the Cottonwood Fire Department, NACOG's guidelines, United Healthcare's guidelines, and countless other guidelines, and have an annual private audit performed along with the audits and regular monitoring required by those entities who hold us accountable. And we use an outside accounting firm to handle our financial data. The senior center's proposed project will preserve the exterior of this building by re-mortaring, replacing crumbling brick, and sealing the brick. This building is historically significant but has suffered neglect by previous uses and/or ownership. It will ensure continued safety for those who utilize the space. Deterioration will only continue to occur the longer we let it go. If we act now, the project is done. I won't be coming back every four years and bugging you. Well, I'm not going to guarantee that, but you know. I'll think of something, you know. But the kitchen exhaust is located approximately three stories high, and it's difficult to find a company who will service the unit. Once a plumber said, "Elaine, I'll get up there and, and fix your exhaust unit on the kitchen exhaust." And he climbed up a ladder, got onto the roof, and he froze. Okay? I had to call the fire department to get him off the roof. They had to bring in a, in a lift to get him down. And this is a safety issue that CDBG funds could help resolve. The dining room carpet has suffered damage due to water seeping through the damaged brick. I have had professionals apply cork around the base of the building, but until the brick is sealed, we will continue to have issues. Electronic digital signage is very important to us, not only from an advertising point of view, but also so individuals can locate our facility. We're dependent upon advertising to promote the many fundraising events that we hold at the senior center, of course, to make ends meet. Gathering is also important, as the rainwater tends to sheet off the high roof onto park, onto the parking lot and entryways, causing some safety concerns for elderly clients. Now, you know, when I put this application together, I threw in the kitchen sink because, you know, what's left over, you apply to another problem, and that's the way I've always done it. And so we're truly thankful for the monetary and grant support from Yavapai County, the City of Cottonwood, the Town of Clarkdale, the Town of Camp Verde, and the Yavapai Apache Nation over, over many years. This has been a huge investment. This is, this is the important thing. This is a huge investment that everyone's made, and we need to protect it now so it will still be standing for the next 100 years. And this grant will complete the renovation project of the Verde Valley Senior Center, and it will continue to operate for many years to come. This is about finishing the job we started so that we don't have to keep prolonging what really needs to be done. And we knew when we started this that there would be add-ons that would require funding through CDBG funds. So I guess I would conclude by saying, in your wisdom, let's finish one thing before you start another. And it's very difficult. I would not like to be sitting in your chairs, you know, and I'm not being pushy, but I see this project as being a priority one. We have so many, so many other needs in this community. It's only 330,000. It would complete my job. So, any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Bremner?
I know you only asked for the time, and I built your watch, but I've got your attention. Okay?
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is the Verde Valley Habitat for Humanity Restore improvements. Again, Tanya, if we could have you speak up as loud as you can. Thank you.
Well, these microphones are a little challenging. So thank you, Mayor Olensky and council and Ms. Allen. I'm sorry to hear that you're going to be leaving. I appreciate the opportunity to be here again. So we're Verde Valley Habitat for Humanity. I'm Tanya Sims. I'm the executive director. And we have a restore building that serves a community, and we're asking for funds to be able to do some major renovations. But first, I'd like to tell you about who we serve and why we need the funding that we receive, why we need to improve our restore so that we can continue to have a funding source for the work that we do. Rachel and Jamie Hernandez moved into their home here in Cottonwood in 2017. Rachel is an in-home caregiver for seniors, a challenging job for some and not enough people in our community who do that job. But she really loves, she really loves the work that she does. And she has a young adult son named Jamie who has brachial plexus herb palsy. So that's a nerve damage condition that he's had since birth. Because of this condition, it makes it difficult for Jamie to perform certain functions. Jamie cannot hold a job to make enough income to support himself, so he's dependent on his mother for his housing needs and always will be dependent on someone. Rachel and Jamie moved frequently, living in a small travel trailer while their home was being built. This created a really challenge for them because Rachel also had to move the trailer three times, moving from park to park because we have a lot of people that come in and live in those parks during the wintertime or the summertime. During the transitional time, Rachel had to move. Jamie ended up having to move in with his grandmother and sleep on an air mattress in the dining room because it just became too much of a challenge for him to work, to live in the travel trailer environment. And during this time, he experienced some big anxiety, a lot of anxiety because of this living arrangement. But since moving in their home, into their home in November of 2017, Jamie now has his own bedroom, and he loves his own space. He doesn't have to sleep in the dining room anymore. He loves to bake and he enjoys using their kitchen. So it's amazing that a situation like having your own space changes your outlook on life. It changes how you, whether you're positive or negative in life. And Jamie now has a home where his physical needs for accessibility will be met as he grows because we built in some accessibility needs that would accommodate him over his growth or his life. So now Jamie's anxiety is gone. He's, he's thriving, and they're doing really well together. We also have another homeowner who's been in her home for several years. She's a young mom with three kids, all in grade school. And in 2017, she lost her husband. When they qualified for their home a few years before, they qualified on a dual income, on a dual income. But when she lost her husband, she now, she still had a mortgage that she could pay because she was able to afford that on a single income and still be able to create a environment for her and her children where they could move past the loss of the husband. We have homeowners who are waiting for us to build homes. We have Nikki who has three children. They live in a two-bedroom apartment. Her son sleeps in the living room. They've turned their laundry room into a pantry because they don't have the space needed for food storage, and she felt that that was more important than having a washer and dryer. We have another homeowner, Yeni Caballero, and her daughter, she has a grade school daughter, and a mother who lives with her. She supports her daughter and her mother, and she's waiting for a home. So we have, we have families who are waiting for homes. And if we don't have the ability to continue to have our resource, our restore, to provide a lot of our major funding, then we're not able to do the job that we need to do, which is providing a service and a mission to build homes. We are the only builder for low-to-moderate income homes in the Verde Valley. There's nobody else. We talked about this at the strategy meeting the other day. So we have a huge need for our restore. We also have an old building. It was built in 1965. It was an automobile dealership, but we have been trying to love it back to condition and trying to make some improvements as we go so that we can continue to use this as a resource for income for us. We've been a nonprofit here in the Verde Valley for almost 20, 24 years. We, our celebration, our anniversary is on April Fool's Day of all things. So on April Fool's Day of this year, we'll be celebrating 24 years. This retail store that we have is, like I said, it's a major resource, funding resource for us. And we want to continue to make sure it's a funding resource. It's located on Main Street. I think most everybody knows where it is. Some consider it to be an eyesore of our community because it doesn't look, have a really nice aesthetic appeal. We would rather it to be an attractive business, so we are working diligently to try to do what we can to improve what it looks like and how it feels when you walk into the store. Our goal is to replace, or replace the roof. The entire big building needs a whole new roof. It's had so many leaks. We, we cringe when it rains like this because we had to do some mediation repair. We have a Last America that we put up. We've had to put styrofoam up on the inside of the, of the ceiling to just cover those holes. We have no heating and cooling that really helps in the major, major, large portion of the store. And that's because it has these old heating units that have just gone, I mean, you can't even find replacement parts for them anymore. We have, our parking lot needs to be basically torn out and replaced because it's, we've had customers who have fallen and injured themselves because we have some areas that are unstable. So we really want this to be a business that will continue to provide us the revenue we need. But we also want it to be a business that the community can be proud of. So it's a dual ask. We've done some, we've made some improvements to the store. If you, if you've been there in the last year and a half, our restore manager here, Andy Kofile, has been with us for about 17 months, and he's made some really nice improvements. We've gotten some storage where we've tried to make it more accommodating and easier to find things so that we have a little extra space, retail space. We've put up some fencing so that we can, and capture our, our donation processing center so that you don't see as much of that stuff going on. We've put up fabric on the inside of the fence so that our neighbors can't see some of the stuff that's going on inside of the fence. We've used old doors to make, build walls to have separation, so we have a construction space that now protects these tools, these, these tools that we've replaced when we had the tools stolen. So we've done a lot of little things that we can do just with the materials and supplies that are donated to us. But there's only so much you can do. And we still have the maintenance of the building that we have to, to continue to maintain. But we don't have $300,000 to complete the major renovations that we need to complete. If I had $300,000, that would be, that would be taking housing away from two families. We can essentially build a home for about $150,000, and I can house two families. And that's usually a single mom with children because that's who we primarily serve. In addition to what we do, we also have Critical Home Repair. And I think most people are most unfamiliar with that. In 2016, we started Critical Home Repair Program where we serve very low to low-income seniors and veterans who are homeowners. In our home, new home program, we serve low-to-moderate income applicants. So we serve quite a diverse population, but we have to continue doing what we're doing. We've built 13 homes and housed 13 families. We've remodeled two homes and put, three homes and put families in. And since we started the Critical Home Repair Program, we have served 42 veterans and elderly citizens. So that's just in about a two-year period. Most of our homeowners are single homeowners. So there's, sometimes we have a couple of people that live in a home. But we want to continue to be able to increase the number of people we can serve in this community. And if we don't protect the investment that we've made, then we're not doing a good job of being good stewards of what we have available to us. So I ask you to consider use, funding our project because we are a staple here in the community. We've proven ourselves, and we don't want to go away.
Any questions from council for Ms. Sims?
No. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Up next is the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. Evening.
Hi, Mayor, council members. I spoke at your strategic planning retreat, and so I'm going to skip all that stuff. I'm Ray Navlon. I'm the executive director, and I'm here to talk about our Transitional Housing Program. If we're fortunate to enough to obtain this, the funding, we plan to purchase a building outright and will continue to use it for the drop-in center, the front portion of it. We would most likely expand our hours, and it would double the space for our overnight emergency shelter. We understand and appreciate the council's concern that for, in capital purchases, for it to be self-sustaining. And I think we've shown that in the budget, but I would consider that a worst-case scenario because we were, we had to only use committed funding through December 31st. I couldn't, we couldn't use any of the grants I'm going to write this year or our fundraising for this year. So it's a deliberate, we've deliberately shown a conservative budget. And the reality is, we have an excellent history of fundraising. In the five months we've been operating the drop-in center, we've raised $400,000, $500,000 with two projects. And since we turned in the proposal, we've identified $51,000 in additional committed funding. funding. $51,000 on top of the $330,000. So this would increase the amount of rooms we could renovate for it in terms of what's in the proposal. And it would increase our rent by 67%. So we've tried to show that the rent can cover the operating expenses. In the last five months, what we've experienced is that the Verdi Valley is ready for homeless services. You know, as evidenced in the amount of support. It's a tremendous amount of support that we've received from the community. As I said, we had an abundance of Christmas presents at Christmas time to offer our guests. Our goal is to save up to $200 a month per occupant to be returned to them when they're ready to transition to permanent housing. I will write grants and I, we will fundraise to raise that money to get the 200 a month to give back to them. I'm not really comfortable tooting my own horn, but in case, you know, you're wondering, we've been around since the 90s, late 90s as an advocacy organization. But we've only had 501(c)(3) status in the last year, year and a half. And so I think there are some considerations that you should be aware of in case you're leery about giving us the $330,000. I've managed and been fiscally responsible for several multimillion-dollar nonprofit service organizations such as Make-A-Wish Foundation where I raised $400,000 over that in my last year there. And I supervised a staff of seven. I worked for Stop Wasting Abandoned Property where I managed housing projects for low-income families. The Council Alcoholism and Other Drug Dependents where I managed an eight-house recovery housing program. And I was the case manager for six years for a dual diagnosis women's recovery house. So I wrote, managed grants and was the finance officer for these as well. We also have a very professional board of directors who have a lot of experience in housing homelessness and managing budgets. You know, I, I named those at your retreat. And so what I'm trying to say is that, I'm trying to make the point that $330,000 is not out of our scope. That we've lived up to our promises for the daytime drop-in center and we far exceeded our goals. In addition, we have a stringent internal controls policy in which no one is able, there's no one person that's able to commit any fraud or anything. And we want to convince you all that we will not come back in the future looking for operating funds. You know, we have, I tried to demonstrate that we have the operational capacity and the competency and the ability to sustain this project. And we're asking for your support and confidence to assist those who are homeless to attain a safe and stable environment. And so this is a housing alternative that we're proposing. We can't build houses with 300, we can't with that, but the transitional housing program can certainly go a long way to housing the homeless, you know, while they get ready to move into permanent housing. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
And I don't mean to pick on it. What you're doing is great and phenomenal and I encourage it and what everybody else is doing. But you called out a particular address for this program.
Uh huh.
And I'm just curious, do you, do you have a, a purchase option on that property?
Not quite. We haven't done purchase option. We're waiting to hear your verdict.
Okay. I mean, they indicated they want to sell the property.
They do want to sell the property and they've agreed to lower the price on it because it's us who is buying the property.
Okay.
There's someone that will speak to that.
Okay. And then the last question, and maybe Scott Ellis is better to answer this, but it is Zone C1?
It's, yeah.
Will require a variance? I just wonder what the likelihood of that happening is.
We haven't fully vetted the property to find out exactly what would happen. We've looked at it kind of on the surface. I think there's a way that if it were to go through, we could look at making it work, whether it's conditional use permit or something down those lines. I don't think a variance would be needed. They're very hard to get.
Okay.
But I think there's options to make it work if that were to be the way the funds were directed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council for Ms. Navlon? No.
I'd like to ask a couple.
Sure, please.
You said that you're good at grant writing.
Yes.
How many grants have you received for this homeless coalition?
Well, we just started in August and most of the grant cycles have ended in August. And the majority, I've, I've written six grants and two have come back and said that they've used all their funding for the, they've already given out the grant money for the year.
Okay.
So now that it's January, I can start applying for the Arizona Community Foundation, the Yavapai Community Foundation, and there's a lot more.
How many of the other communities in the valley have offered to support you?
I'm not aware of any, what do you mean?
Cotton, or Clarkdale, Camp Verdi, Sedona.
I haven't approached them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Navlon. Sir, we're going to roll into the next one and if you'd like to speak during call to the public, you're, you're more than welcome to.
I just have one thing of support for the financial situation.
I'm sorry, so we're going to roll into the next applicant and then we'll do a call to the public and have everyone come up and speak during the hearing. The next folks up are Option F, Old Town Activity Park Improvements. Welcome, Ms. Kelly. Again, if you could, please speak clearly into the mic and as loud as you can so folks in the back can hear you.
So I'm Denise Kelly. Hello, Mayor, City Council, City Attorney and Manager and everyone else. And this is Brenda Clauston with me. We're from the Old Town Association. We, we don't necessarily know how, you know, this would, process would work, but we're professionals that we're here to finish what we started and we'd like to move forward some way, somehow in the future with the city. So I have a handout here that talks about why improve parks and other community facilities. That doesn't even touch on the economic part of that. The one is, if you don't mind, I'm going to read it since we have a little bit of time. Good facilities contribute to the general quality of life in the community. A community with good parks and other facilities is a pleasant and sociable place to live and a lively outdoor and cultural life. Residents spend more time in the community and therefore are more familiar with one another and contribute to a sense of community. Good facilities provide exposure to and opportunities for a wide variety of intellectual, cultural, and physical activities. For many low-income citizens, an affordable, accessible community facilities have been an introduction to art, to a variety of musical styles, the world of books, sports, hiking, and any number of pursuits. People of low income, particularly youth, may have little other chance for these experiences. Good facilities can instill a sense of ownership and community pride in residents. A neighborhood or a community rich in opportunities that community facilities can provide is a good place to live and it engenders pride of residents, a place in residence as well. As a result, they may be more likely to pay attention to the maintenance of the community, keeping it free of vandalism, keeping it clean, supporting community events, and generally helping to create a vibrant and satisfying living environment. Good facilities can provide services that help everyone. Libraries and museums can enhance the intellectual life of community residents, as can parks, and expose them to many points of view and ways of looking at the world that they might not otherwise have. Good facilities can help prevent crime and other antisocial behavior. Community facilities can present children and youth, for instance, with places to go and activities to participate in. Learning, sports, enrichment that act as healthy alternatives to crime and antisocial behavior. Good facilities can increase the level of fairness and equity in a community. When all residents have access to facilities that make life better and more pleasant, regardless of their socioeconomic status, communities take a step towards greater equality and equity. Good facilities can help attract new residents. People are more likely to move to communities with well-kept parks, lively cultural institutions, good schools, and efficient public transportation. Good facilities can improve the economic climate and prospects of the community by attracting business and tourism. Businesses want to locate in communities with good facilities for the same reason that individuals do. It helps keep, it helps them attract and keep the best employees and also tells them, and also tells them something about the management and self-respect of the community. More business means more and better jobs, a higher tax base, and a healthier local economy. Amama Sun. Good facilities can make the community more attractive physically. Well-designed parks and buildings and well-restored historic sites, especially when they're part of a comprehensive community plan, can add greatly to the pleasant atmosphere of a community. Good facilities can provide gathering places that improve the social character of community life. Parks, plazas, the courtyards, sets of public buildings, even well-designed bus stations can serve to increase residents' interaction with one another and create a greater sense of community that reaches across community sectors. Now, I pulled this article from a very comprehensive article written by Why Improve Parks and Other Community Facilities by Community Toolbox. And I haven't even touched on part of that whole presentation because, again, there's the economic part of it. We spoke a little bit about taxes. We talk about bringing business into town, new businesses into town, and a place to hold events and to charge for those events. And I have spoken just today to the, to the woman that runs the art shows in Sedona VOC and she's ready to call Parks and Recs about renting that. And that will be 30 to 60 vendors coming into that area to support us economically. So, did you have anything you wanted to say, Brad?
Just from an Old Town perspective, it would be great to have the funds for the park so that we could have more events for everyone. It's just, we feel like it's underutilized, grossly underutilized. And it's a really great park right across the street. And there's so much that we could do with that to bring more people down into Old Town, have more family and kids' activities, increase tourism and local business. And, I mean, we, you know, she, she stated all the fine points about parks, but I think everybody knows how they can be utilized for the benefit of a community and not to mention the beautification aspects too. So I know you have a big decision. There's so many worthy causes, but we just wanted to speak in behalf of our little park across the street.
Sure. Any questions from council for Ms. Kelly or Clauston? No. Okay. Thanks to both of you for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any discussion, council, before we move into hearing from the folks in the room tonight?
Discuss after.
Okay. Okay, folks, again, we're going to hear from all of you. It's important to me to hear from each and every one of you. So if you haven't already filled out a form, they should, unless we ran out, which we may have, there should be some in the back. Borrow a pen from your neighbor, fill it out. And we, again, would like to hear from everybody. This is really encouraging to me to see so many folks here tonight to lobby for your, your particular pet project. So don't be shy and fill out a form and come address your council. We are going to limit you to five minutes, so please do try to keep it brief and to the point. And we'd like to hear from everybody, so let's allow everyone else in the room time tonight. So first up is Mr. Tim Allen. Are you in the room tonight? Evening. And after Tim Allen, after Tim Allen, we're going to hear from Jessica Johnson, just to cue everyone up. Welcome.
Thanks for, for being here tonight. This is excellent. We are here with our two kiddos, two years old and five years old. And we're super excited about the potential riverfront park expansion and, you know, we hear talk of a splash pad and things like that. We spent the past 10 years in Golden, Colorado, where that was just part of our daily activity was walking along the creek. And there's a, not only like the jail trail, but a paved concrete path that follows right along the creek, you know, so you can take strollers and skateboards and things like that and kayaks and just, it provided more access to the river. So something like that would be incredible for this community and we're, we're here for the long run. This is, this is our, our final destination, so to speak. So we're super excited to be part of the community and we want to help out in any way possible. But what's already an amazing park and we go to all the time, we were just actually at the skate park, or the bike park, skate park with bikes. I think that might be illegal, but anyways. It was, it's an amazing facility, you know, and like the fact that there's a huge dirt lot right in the center of a skate park, why don't we build a half-pipe? Why don't we do, you know, the BMX track that it says on the plaque, but there's no BMX track? And maybe I'm out of the loop and there was a BMX track at one point. I'd love to help put one in. So that's kind of all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Jessica Johnson, you're up next. And then after Jessica will be Mindy Brigham.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jessica Johnson and I'm a resident of Cottonwood. I grew up in a place called Sierra Vista, Southern Arizona, and Cottonwood reminds me a lot of Sierra Vista. I lived in Fort Worth. I lived in Phoenix. I lived in Prescott. I lived in Tucson. I lived in the Grand Canyon. And I love a small community. And I've talked with many of my patients and we all agree, you know, you can't cut people off and flip them the bird in a small community because they may be your doctor or your neighbor. It, you know, a sense of community is, is just a wonderful thing and that's what most people, I think, that come here love about Cottonwood. In Sierra Vista, there is a big community park there. There's an amphitheater. I've been to many events there growing up. There's a cancer walk and, you know, the memories that we've created there, Art in the Park. Every year you go to Art in the Park and you see people, you run into people, you have that sense of community with them. And so I am advocating for the Parks and Rec plan. I guess I'm nervous.
You're good.
Thank you. I was just recently in Goodyear. I don't know if you guys have been to the Wigwam Resort, but we were driving around one night and there are so many parks and just people all over the place, people doing all different kinds of things. And I, I just love a sense of a place that people can gather for that. I did go to the meeting that we had in December about the parks and the plans for the park and it was very exciting. They had, they must have had 30 different ideas. A river walk. Ever since I've lived here, I've thought it would be so great to manicure the creek or the, or the river and just have a beautiful place to walk by and picnics and it's, so I, I actually believe that facing everything else that is up tonight, it feels like a bit of a splurge to invest in Parks and Rec. But in my opinion, it's a long-term gain. I think that when you foster a sense of community, that all these other needs can get met. People see those needs and people are more willing and there's a spirit of community, a spirit of kindness, a spirit of charity that grow when you do have a place for people to meet and, and have fun. to meet and, and have fundraisers, or have whatever. And I also believe that this initiative represents Cottonwood in its entirety. I think every, every citizen can benefit from a Parks and Rec well-thought-out plan. Like I said, long-term gains, I believe, would benefit everybody, not just a few, but thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate it. So Mindy, Mindy Brigham, you're up next, and after you will have Rick Rosenzweig. Evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Mindy Brigham, and I'm a business and community development partner for Goodwill of Central and Northern Arizona, so I cover the Verde Valley area and the Prescott area. I'm here today to support the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, and it's amazing what Raina has already done and everyone involved thus far. And thanks to the volunteers and everyone involved, the drop-in center is open on cold nights now. But what would even be more amazing is to have transitional housing for individuals that show commitment and effort, and willing to push through to overcome poverty through the power of work. However, without housing, first, individuals don't have a place to sleep, they don't have a place to shower, or clean clothes to wear, which would give those better opportunities to seek employment. As a community, in my opinion, we're one team, one fight, one success. Goodwill of Central and Northern Arizona has received grants from Boeing, General Motors, and Google. And in order to utilize those, what we're gonna be doing is offering digital skills computer workshops, so 101, 102, 103, and we will be working very closely with the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, with the drop-in center, in order to help individuals improve their digital skills and get better jobs from that. So, the skills gaps that employers need job seekers to have in order to employ them is very important. It's a, it's a problem that we've been facing for a while, just people not having those digital skills. If we want individuals to have a fighting chance to beat poverty and overcome obstacles that the homeless are experiencing right now, then they deserve all the resources available. With transitional housing, individuals will have hope and feel empowered to make necessary changes in order to change their lives permanently. They can prepare for their future and feel confident knowing that navigators within the community will be guiding them to reach levels of independence that will set them up for success. Setting goals, completing goals, working towards stepping stones, and creating their own path. And what I love about Northern Arizona in this area is that there are so many who really care and take part in helping the community, and they are taking initiative to make individuals aware that resources are available. And we are here to lead them in the right direction and to make those resources specifically available to them. If we can't help them directly as Goodwill, we will direct them to Yavapai College, to NACOG, you know, all, all resources here. Arizona at Work. At the end of the day, we want to make sure we are doing our very best to meet the needs of those in need of support. And we are so very grateful for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition and all that they do for this community and for those that are struggling. And that's why Goodwill of Central and Northern Arizona is here tonight to support Verde Valley Homeless Coalition and their efforts of obtaining transitional housing funds. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brigham. Appreciate it. Can we have Mr. Rick Rosenzweig up next, and after him will be Carrie Cray? And if I'm butchering your name, I apologize.
Talking to me?
No, I think I have yours correct.
Nobody ever gets it right.
Did I get it right?
It was perfect.
Seriously.
I didn't pay attention to it, so.
Mr. Mayor, council, new city manager, it's privileged to address you.
I'm, I've been a real estate broker, I'm Rick Rosenzweig, I've been a real estate broker, commercial real estate broker in this area for forty years. And when Raina approached me on finding a building that would work, I thought about the buildings that are available, including things that are not on the market. Am I speaking loud enough here?
I think you can speak a little bit louder. It'd be fun.
Okay. And I just happened to think about a building that's not on the market, but it just felt perfect. And when I talked to Raina about it, she got Board of Directors out there, and everybody looked at it, and everybody's been doing, drawing up plans and everything. It's, it's a very well-located property, and it's also very economical, so it won't be some big expenditure to make some organization wealthy. But the, the particular need in this case is so important, and it's great to see all these wonderful organizations that need, need the funds. I wish they could all get 'em. But this, this, I'm representing the property owner, and the, even though this property is deliberately not under contract right now, because as Raina said, they wanna see whether this, they're gonna get the funds, otherwise they feel like it's just a waste of time. But they have the full support of the property owner. There's, there's actually, oddly enough, two other inquiries on this property, also very good companies that wanna buy this property, but the owner has put, Kim Wright is his name, he's put this group first in line for the buyers. So, I just wanted to say that we have, even though there's no written contract at this point, it is still, I'd say it's as good as in writing. So, just wanted to share that.
I kind of assumed you might address that.
About the, about the contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, and with a lot of people, I would say it's risky, but in this case, I know the property owner, I've known him for thirty years, and I feel really good about the situation. I think it's, it's a particular location that's off Main Street, and it's right near DES. It's just got a, it's got a, not only the building, but it's got a vacant lot next to it there where people can do things. It's, it's just a very well-situated thing, so hopefully this'll come to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, Carrie Cray, you are up next, and after you will be Donna Fulton.
Hi, I'm Carrie Cray, and the Chief Whole Health Officer at Spectrum Healthcare here in Cottonwood. And I'm just here to speak in support of Raina's project with the Verde Valley Housing Coalition, the Transitional Housing Program. At Spectrum, we really support whole health care, so that's, again, our mission is, or our, our vision statement is for mind, for body, for all of you, and we really believe that. Like, in order for someone to recover, where's their physical health or their mental health, you know, they need basic supports, and you think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that, you know, that housing is right down there. And so for someone to be able to get better in our community, they need that stability. And for, there's some people, losing their housing is a, is a real reality. We work with a number of individuals who are homeless, and it's hard to focus on their recovery when they don't know where they're gonna sleep. Or, you know, we have an internal work adjustment training program, so we're teaching people the skills, that most of, mostly social skills, to be able to get, move on to get jobs, and we've had some success in that area. We work really closely with RSA, the State Vocational Agency, in referring people, and they're helping with getting people employment. But then if you have a job, so maybe now you're starting to get the income to move into housing, but it takes a while to save up that money to be able to move in. In the interim, it's hard to keep a job when you don't have a place to live if people are living out of their cars. So, I, I think that Raina, I've been in the area for five years, and, and then, then at five years that I've been at Spectrum, and when I first came, I used to go to Verde Valley Housing Coalition meetings. And, and I think that Raina has done an amazing job, since she's come on board, from what I've seen, in really banding people together, getting it to nonprofit status, and even accomplishing what she has with a warming center, and then, you know, a cooling center when it's really, really hot in the, in the summertime months. And so, you know, I know that we have a number of clients that, people that we serve that use that agency, and that we've partnered with her on several different things, and providing food, getting services to people. They've been able to identify people who need help, and then we're able to come in. So it's really been a very positive thing. And I think housing in general in this community for people who are of a lower income is really very much needed, and it's just, it's central to people being able to be successful. You talk about the social determinants of health, and, you know, we're not a housing agency, and people come to us all the time looking for help with housing, but we can support and help others that, you know, are trying to do this and make a difference. So, I just wanted to state our support for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cray. Up next is Donna Fulton. Thank you. And after Ms. Fulton, we'll have Terry Clements. Evening.
Hi, everyone, I'm Donna Fulton. I'm gonna miss you. I'm, I'm here to, in support of the community block grant money being given to the Parks and Rec Department for their master plan. I think that it's gonna be all-encompassing, it's, it's gonna be awesome, I mean, it's gonna provide for what the city of Cottonwood could look like, you know, ten to twenty years from now, you know? And it's, it's, you know, for all ages, and, you know, I think that a lot of things that are in the works or could come of this could really increase tourism, you know, and visitation, and maybe, you know, a lot of people could decide to live in this small community of Cottonwood, 'cause it has so much to offer. However, I do feel that the city should provide some funds to help the homeless coalition. I think their vision is such a great one, and I wish that this money could be split up, but it can't. And, and so I hope that you can do something in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton.
Ms. Fulton, that would make our lives so much easier if we could split it up.
So, Terry Clements, you're up next, and then after you will be Reverend Dr. Wendy Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice, Vice Mayor, and the City Council. I've lived all over the country, but I grew up in Arizona, and we had wonderful parks in Phoenix back in the sixties when I was growing up. We had community parks that were really special. But all over the country, I've been really impressed with Rails to Trails, which, if you've lived in, particularly in the east where a lot of the railroads have been abandoned, those trails have become real magnets for people to move into communities. The funny thing is that at first, many people that lived on these railroads didn't want people coming in. They didn't want this kind of trail system, 'cause they thought it would draw people in, and somebody would come on their property or do damage or whatever. But what they found was that mothers with strollers were on these trails, people in wheelchairs being pushed by people, people on skates, people on bikes. It became a magnet for the entire community. And when I go visit my friends in the east, and we go to these trails that are kind of networked throughout, particularly New England, they're packed all the time. And the reason I bring that up is because things like this, you know, Cotton, I'm in Cottonwood because Cottonwood is the kind of town I wanna, I wanna be in. I grew up in Phoenix, it was never as small as Cottonwood, but it felt, in our little community, like it was what, it was smaller than certainly that many years ago. But it's important, I mean, it's part of our vision, sure, but if we wanna grow this little town and get people of all ages, if we want families with young kids to live in Cottonwood, then this is the kind of thing we have to do. And if we do grow our base, somebody was mentioning that earlier, this is what can help us with all these other things we wanna do. Because I agree with Donna, I think the homeless coalition should get some funds, and maybe we can find some way to give them some funds as well. And all, and frankly, all of these entities deserve support, all of them. I think they're all doing a fantastic job. But if we start with the basics, I look at Sedona, and when I first came to the Verde Valley, I thought, just like probably almost everybody else does, gee, I wanna live in those red rocks. And I'm glad that I live in Cottonwood. I'm glad I chose Cottonwood. But they have things that set them apart. I mean, they have the rugged mountain bike trails, they have the rugged hiking, but who has the multi-use trail for every age group? I was at the Riverfront meeting, I don't know, a month, month and a half ago, and I was struck by the number of young families who came out and said, you know what? I don't have a place to, to teach my kid how to ride a bike, a safe place, to teach my kid how to ride a bike. I didn't have that problem in Phoenix, but we have it now because our roads are heavily traveled, we don't really have a safe place on the roads. I mean, we can, we can divide it up into a little four-foot square, but that's really not enough for people to have a safe place. And so I really think that we need to invest in a master plan, which I hope will include a lot of multi-use trails, 'cause I think that can set us apart as a city. Nobody else in the Verde Valley has that. So I support the Parks and Rec master plan.
Thank you, Ms. Clements.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Reverend Dr. Wendy Davis, and after you will be Denise Kelly, unless you feel like you've already said your piece. I hope I'm getting your name right. Am I getting your name right? Is it Wendy?
Yeah, it's Revan, Revan, 'cause I go fast a lot of the time. Doctor, PhD, Wendy Davis. Thank you so much for all the work that you do for this beautiful town of Cottonwood. Thank you, everybody, for the commitment that you have to make this a really great place. Are we happy to be in Cottonwood, or what? I did a little research before I came over here to find out what the Cottonwood represents and what it was used for. Cottonwoods can live up to four hundred years, and it's the fastest-growing tree. It's the fastest-growing tree because it loves water. And it also provides shelter up to seventy-five feet. A lot of our homeless people actually live under Cottonwood trees. I've stayed in, under a Cottonwood tree before, right down by the park, where I used to live near Camelot, in Camelot. It's also medicine. It actually gets rid of aches and pains for the muscles and joints. I will tell you right now that we have the perfect name for our town, and I've decided to make Cottonwood my home. My story's a little unique. I came to the Verde Valley eleven years ago in January, so I'm celebrating my eleventh year. Started out in Sedona, a very rich woman. I became homeless after two months. And I learned how to put things in storage. I'm now down to a five-by-five. A home is not a place to keep furniture. A home is a place to be open, and loving, and hospitable. We have a town that has the potential to have hospitality, clean water turned from water waste, beautiful parks, all of these ideas. A senior center where I did the WOT program, Elaine knows me very well, because I did two hundred meals a day, thanks to Spectrum. Now I'm working with RSA, and my company happens to have the same initials, Rising Star Academy. But what I'm most proud of is that I am ordained as a minister, a Revan, in the Order of Holy Rascals. Yes, the Order of Holy Rascals, because each one of us has the potential to love, laugh, and learn. What is an Order of Holy Rascals? Our patron saints are Dorothy's dog, Toto, the child who reveres that the emperor wears no clothes, and Bert the turtle who topples Yottel the king. If it wasn't for my service dog, the star, I would not be here. How many of us in this room know somebody who's been homeless? Raise your hands. That's a lot of people. How many of you have helped a homeless person? Please raise your hands. Same hands, pretty much. Jackie Nairn and I met at the Erase the Stigma event that Rising Star Academy had a table for. And what we found out was that homelessness is not a problem of not having a house, it's a problem of attitude. The attitude of people who have houses but aren't sharing resources, and the attitude of people who are downtrodden. I wanna read something to you that I learned about, and I have one minute, and I will do my best to do this without crying, and I'm gonna ask you to do something in just a minute that will help us all to unify. Michael Wesley Collins, twenty-five thousand views on Facebook. Homelessness is no joke. Take a journey through being homeless and penniless has given me a new perspective on what hardships homeless people endure. By the way, he was the founder of the Church of Divine Love, and he committed suicide on Wednesday. January nineteenth, twenty-nineteenth, we lost a beautiful soul with three children left. Once you're in homelessness, it's very difficult to escape. How many of you on the council have ever been homeless? Raise your hand. You don't know yet. How many of you have been homeless? Raise your hand. You know what I'm talking about. Home is where the heart is. My heart is. My heart is in here, but it's also in Cottonwood. It's very important for us to recognize that it's a vicious cycle. We have to help people from the lowest rung. Do you know how much mental illness there is in this country right now? I will give you some examples. And by the way, before I lose my chance, we have an inventor for wastewater treatment who came all the way from Phoenix to be here. And I have materials for all of you about OptiBack technology that Clarkdale used. And it will use, I'll give this to you, Tim.
Thank you.
It's Tom Rockwell. Please stand, Tom. Am I out of time? Mine says I have 18 seconds left.
18 seconds.
Can I take a little bit of the time just to conclude because there's so much I would love to share?
If you could just be brief, ma'am, we would appreciate it.
What?
If you could just be brief for the respect of the others here.
I will be very brief. Brief. The word "home" has its roots, the sound of "om." I would like to share with you an invitation to om with me. I am not homeless anymore or houseless because I live in Divine Grace at the Divine Grace Yoga Ashram. I get two meals a day, organic, blessed, and vegetarian. And I'm teaching yoga four times a week because I'm a certified yoga practitioner and instructor. So please, at the last part of this meeting, can we all just sound in harmonies three om's? And it would just tickle my heart to see us do this at a council meeting as a holy rascal.
Ma'am, I did say earlier that we're-
Please join me. Two more. Om. Don't be shy. You can do it. Why is everybody so scared? I don't understand. One last chance. Please, take a deep breath in. Tim, you need to take control.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Up next, Denise Kelly, you did already speak. So I think we're, I don't even know if she's still here. Move on then to, and Tanya, you as well, Ms. Sims. Then next up is Paul, is it Morey? Am I, okay. And then after you, sir, will be Bill Myers. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Unfortunately, everybody is so positive and mine may seem a little negative, but it's for good reason, but it's positively negative. My name's Paul Morey. My wife, Michelle, and I purchased our home in the Verde Valley 13 years ago. I work at Verde Valley Medical Center and Michelle serves the community by providing free breastfeeding support to mothers who live in the Verde Valley. We have chosen our designated professions and the location of our home because we truly do care deeply for all of the persons living in this community. We have lived in many cities across the United States. Before moving to Cornville, we lived in a town of Bel Air, Maryland. It's important. It's a town of three square miles, 10,000 people, 4,235 households. The I-95 corridor runs just east of the town and you can reach the city of Baltimore in 30 minutes by car in light traffic. Bel Air, Maryland is touted as a super family-friendly town, a place that once was considered to be a fantastic place to raise a family with great schools and no crime, according to many people we spoke to before we decided to live there. In 2014, Michelle and I decided to make Bel Air, Maryland, our home. And in 2013, the year prior, four halfway homes and homeless shelters were created in that town. Lighthouse Recovery, Man House Incorporated, Anna's House, and Turning Corners Incorporated. They were all funded with government grants and were received with much apprehension by the persons who lived in Bel Air for years and years prior. The introduction of these halfway house slash homeless shelters correlated to a dramatic increase in both violent and nonviolent crime in the Bel Air area, with an overall city data crime index of 423, with the U.S. average being 280. Also in 2017, this family-friendly town of Bel Air, Maryland, reported 424 heroin-related We were personally affected by this increase in crime with break-in and robbery of our home, a break-in into one of our cars, my bike was stolen, and one afternoon we found a used, open needle and syringe in our front lawn where our daughter Ivy was walking around barefoot. My wife and Michelle and I both feel that the utilization of block grant money to care for the halfway homeless population in the Verde Valley by providing temporary and permanent housing for them could lead to an increase in crime in the valley and compromise the safety of the families that are currently here serving the community that they live in and love. Here are a few of many examples of documented cases and research to illustrate that the introduction of halfway slash homeless housings may correlate with a dramatic increase in crime. If I go over, please stop me and I'll stop. I don't mean to be disrespectful.
You're fine. Thank you.
The first is from the New York Times. A special report by Nikita Stewart of the New York Times, January 2018, examined the many shelters in the New York City area. Her report found this, quote, "Prostitution, drug use, and violence occurred at dozens of the New York City shelters for homeless families last year." The American Journal of Psychology, October 2008, examined how the likelihood of committing a crime changes as homeless individuals cycle between episodes of homelessness and having available housing. They followed 204 homeless persons over four years. The key points to their findings was this, quote, "That both street homelessness and sheltered homelessness was associated with a higher likelihood of committing nonviolent crimes." International Journal of Law Psychiatry, winter 1996, examined homelessness and homeless in sheltered care, and this is what they found. For violent crimes, the sheltered care population, sheltered care population, is more likely to be arrested at a rate of 1.33 times the rate of the state population. Their study indicated empirically, the mental ill population in sheltered care are more dangerous than those in the general population. The Madison, Wisconsin, project was called Heartland Housing. It was an $11.7 million, 45-unit project created to give permanent housing to 45 of the city's neediest families. Once the housing units opened its doors, here is a list of some of the events that followed after the Heartland Housing units were filled. One, that property alone generated 210 police calls from June 21st to November 23rd. Increased rates of gunfire, increased rates of homicide, increased rates of large-scale fights. A special police task force was created to protect the area around the Heartland Housing. Officer Paul Skidmore headed the task force and said-
That's it, my friend.
All right. Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just end real quick? If they can om, I can, it'll be real quick.
Real quick, my friend.
Okay, I'll be real quick. I apologize. I don't mean this to hurt anybody's feelings. All I'm saying is, there's research to show that this can be potentially dangerous. And that's all I wanted to bring up. That's all. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morey. Appreciate it. Up next is Bill Myers, and after you will be Jeff Newman. Mr. Piper, if you could just fill out a form and-
My name is Bill Meevers. My wife, Sheila Howard. Just to comment on the previous speaker, I don't disagree with any of his figures. But I think if you take it in context to anyone that's been to New York or Baltimore or Chicago, which I lived in at one time, those situations are entirely different than what we're talking about here for transitional housing. We're gonna have more of a problem because the Forest Service has closed down these camping areas all around us. Those people are going to go someplace. And it's not something we can just push away. Now, actually, what we're talking about, not transitional housing, we're talking about transformational living. Because if you can get someone out of the woods, and I have worked with people in the woods. At one time, I was one step away from being homeless. If you can get people out of the woods, you have a chance to give them some structure. They have no structure. They have no way of being able to learn to get out. They have little incentive because they've learned to live tribally. So this is actually a transformational operation that gives them all of the support, it gives them structure, it gives them ways to learn a different way of living. My wife and I are full-time arvers. We've been in Cottonwood now, this is our fourth winter. We love the town. We love the town. And this is our home. I personally have worked with people that have lived or were living in the woods and helped them transition out. And I also know how easy it is to go back if they don't have a full range of support We are fortunate enough to be representative of Why Not Foundation of Orlando, Florida. And this is our letter of commitment. After years of conversation, full-time transitional housing for the homeless has become a reality. If the city of Cottonwood passes the $330,000 grant to the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, the Why Not Foundation of Orlando, Florida commits to match dollar and dollar up to $50,000 raised by other donors. The $100,000 thus raised assures a successful launch and provides for emergency expenses. Our sincere appreciation to the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, the city of Cottonwood, and many clear, had hoped to address the tragedy of homelessness.
Thank you, sir. Up next, Jeff Newman. And after you will be Vicki Jo Anderson. I hope I'm getting your name correct.
Close enough, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jeff Newman. I'm a captain with the Sheriff's Office. I'm actually the jail commander or warden, if you will, of your Detention Services Division of the Sheriff's Office. And I'm here in support of the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. We at the Sheriff's Office go to great lengths to try to determine risk factors of every individual being booked into the jail. And we average about 9,000 intakes a year. And through the expenditure of about $750,000 a year through grant money, we screen every individual that comes into our facility. And we screen them for all sorts of risk factors, whether it be substance abuse, mental health abuse, or mental health issues, whether it be housing issues or adverse childhood issues. We try to identify those risk factors and try to link them to care before they leave our facility. And by doing that, over the last two years, we identified, two years ago, that 50% of our population in the jail suffered from mental illness. 50%. Every day, we have 50% that are either taking a psychotropic drug or have suffered from some sort of mental health issue. And by screening every individual that comes into our custody, we're able to identify those risk factors and link them to care before they get out of our custody. Now, some come to us and they are going to DOC. They're never gonna get out of our custody. They're going straight to the state, and that's where they deserve to go. But there's a very large portion of our inmate population that are going back into their communities. And they're going back into their communities with one of these risk factors. And overwhelmingly, there's people that cannot go back into their home because they have a victim in the home or they come from the homeless population. And so the way that we're successful is being able to link them to a transitional housing, whichever community they come from. And so I applaud the city of Cottonwood for their efforts, the Verde Valley Coalition for their efforts. But every community in Yevapai County suffers from transient housing availability. But we have noticed that if we're able to link somebody to a bed that needs a bed, then they're more likely to be successful with whatever care that they need. And we have found that those that are enrolling in our post-arrest diversion programs, which is all of the risk factors, you take them into consideration, if they participate in the treatment, the recidivism has gone down from 60% for the mentally ill down to 23% last year. And the only way that we're able to be successful is if we have a place for them to stay. If we don't have a place for them to stay and we can't put them into some sort of transitional housing, and in Cottonwood, you have places like the Verde Valley Coalition, you also have places like Angie's House, and you have other places that go to great lengths like Damien and what he's doing here in Cottonwood, that link people to the services that they need. That's what makes them successful. That's what keeps them from reoffending and committing crimes in your community. And so we're here at the Sheriff's Office just to show you what we see. 9,000, excuse me, 9,000 bookings a year. The recidivism rate can be correlated to the services that you're able to provide to people who are suffering from substance abuse, co-occurring disorders, mental health issues. When you can link them to that care as they're coming back into your communities, the reduction in, or their likelihood of reoffend goes drastically down. But if they don't have a place to stay, then they also have to battle that. And they're more likely to reoffend when they don't have that support system. So I just, I thank you for what you're doing. I thank you for what the Verde Valley Coalition is doing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Vicki Jo Anderson, you're up next. And following you will be Rob Biggs. Evening.
Mayor, council members. I'm a lifelong resident of Cottonwood, and I love every proposal tonight. And, but bless your hearts. I am, work as the president of the Relief Society of our church, and I deal with the people that are caught in this gap. Currently working with a single mom that has just come out of Angie's house and doesn't have a house. And so I speak in favor of the coalition proposition. I'm also concerned about being in California recently and seeing the homeless that's there. I think it's a wave. We're about three years behind that. We need to be ahead of the ballgame there in some way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Appreciate your time. Rob Biggs, you're up next. And following you will be Cindy Kofile. Evening.
My name is Rob Biggs. I am pastor of Living Water, Four Square Church on Mingus. And we've been here really in Cottonwood only three years, a little over three years, and have fallen in love with Cottonwood, not the city, but the people. And we, my youngest daughter is, and her family moved up here with us from Las Vegas. We're from Las Vegas. And to take over the church, my daughters and my son-in-law have jobs here. They brought their three kids with them, and they're all involved in the community. And we, I pastor a church that's involved in the community. In fact, we look at the community as not here for the church, but we are here for the community. And we are involved with several organizations here in town. And one is Old Town Mission, House of Ruth, and some others that we've been supportive of, supplying volunteers for. And just recently, I was introduced to Reina and the Coalition. And we had a good sit-down conversation, and I was able to discover her heart, and not only her heart, but her qualifications, and just really impressed with what she is- not only her heart, but her qualifications, and just really impressed with what she is involved with, and what is she building there. Again, I am a, I'm not an advocate per se for programs and stuff, I, I'm kind of a hands-on people person. And I'm not one just to create something that just puts a Band-Aid on a situation. I'm somebody that looks for solutions. And in my conversation with Renee, I see the Coalition, the Homeless Coalition, as someone that's just not trying to have a place that people stop over when it's cold, but someplace that is actually a transitional place that provides solutions. I think when you provide solutions, people become an asset to the community rather than a drag on the community. When you provide hope for a person, it transforms people. And again, I think it will be even a better city than what we are even right now. Like I said, I love this city, and I love the opportunity tonight to be able to just be here. And there is so many, I don't envy your decision at all. You, and I, I could go on and on, because I'm before a pulpit and I got a mic. So, I'm trying to resist, but anytime you reach a person in need is always a good thing. Always a good thing. And so, that would be my support for the Homeless Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Biggs, appreciate your time. Up next, we're flying through these folks, just to give everyone an idea here, how many more we have left. We're flying through them. So, Cindy Kofile, and after you will be Sharon Joseph. Evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, kudos to you for pronouncing my last name right. Not many people get that. Mr. Mayor, Council, and welcome to our new town manager. My name is Cindy Kofile, I am the Director of Donor Relations with Habitat for Humanity, so I guess that pretty much gives away what I need to talk about. I can be long-winded, but I'll be pretty quick, because I'm about ready to fall asleep, I'm past my bedtime. But I want to talk about Habitat for Humanity as a whole. Habitat for Humanity International has been around since 1976, developed a program to bring affordable housing to individuals in need. Habitat for Humanity here in Verde Valley has been around since 1995, '24, this coming April, successful years in providing affordable housing for low-income families. These are families that need a hand-up, way out of poverty, basically. Those of you, I think back, 1987, my husband and I purchased our first home. Those of you in real estate, and those of you that have been around that long, my first home was $38,000. Now, in Cottonwood, the average home, if someone who knows better than me can correct this, but I believe it's somewhere between $231,000 and $250,000 in Cottonwood for the average home. I couldn't afford that until I was way into my 40s and working really, really hard. And I was blessed, I had a family that supported me. I came from a two-parent family, I never had a want for anything. Owning a home, we had lived in the same home my entire life practically, so I never knew anything else. So, I knew that was what I wanted to do. And there are so many, whether they be a single parent, a single mother, a single father, or even a two-parent family, who are struggling on minimum wage jobs, which is not a living wage. And they're having a really difficult time, and there's no way that they would be able to afford a home of $230,000. And that's where Habitat comes in. They're able to afford a home that will not exceed more than 30% of their gross income. I've been with Habitat for seven years, I've been here in Cottonwood for a little over a year now. And if any, I came from Payson, and if anyone that talks about the rim, I tell you, the Sedona Red Rocks, knock 'em dead, you guys. But, you know, what I really want to talk about is, you know, we have two families right now, in the history of our organization, that have paid off their homes, paid off their mortgages. Statistically, Habitat homeowners stay in their home for the entire term of their mortgage. I don't think there's very many people that have done that, been in the same home, a lot of people move. Well, but that's what we do, because we were raised in that. Homeownership not only provides stability for the family and for the children, it provides them self-reliance. They're no longer living paycheck to paycheck. They're actually being able to make forward-thinking choices because they're not spending 50, 60, 70% of their income on rent. They have a way out. This is one of the last income builders available to people. You actually, you think about it, those of you that have owned a home your whole life, you started out, you had your starter home, and then you moved up, and then you moved up, but the whole time, you were building equity, and that equity belonged to you, and that is what changes people's lives. It doesn't just change the homeowner, it changes their children, their children's children, and so on, and so on. And so, this is what Habitat for Humanity does. This is the great thing that's been going on in our world, not just here in the United States, but globally, since 1976. You know, we do have asked for funds to help us with the love that we're giving to our restore building and our offices there, but loving it isn't enough. There's a lot of work, there's, it's an old building, it leaks, it's cold, but we persevere, but it would definitely, I think, help not only the community, it would help our organization, obviously, but the help that we are able to provide here in the community. And I would ask that you support that proposal before you, and I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kofile. Sharon Joseph.
Hi, I'm Sharon Joseph. I have slept at the homeless shelter as a supervisor there, many, many nights with my husband. Actually, we don't sleep, we have to stay awake the whole night and supervise. Wonderful experience. I absolutely feel so good afterwards. Let me tell you about the first snowfall in Jerome. 10 o'clock, I get this phone call. Sharon, we have an elderly guy here that has been sleeping in the park, he's been sleeping under a tarp. There were, there was snow on top of this tarp, he is injured. We think he's a good guy? Do you mind if we bring him in? My husband Jim and I said, "Bring him in." He came limping, very, very cold, freezing. I believe, and the officer who brought him to me told me, he would not have made the I don't know about you, but tonight's pretty darn cold and pretty wet. I feel bad for anyone that has to spend the night out tonight. This coming week, we will have about five or six nights of cold, cold nights. I would challenge anyone here to come and help me supervise this week. My husband's ill, can't come with me, but I will be there one night this week. I have a turkey in the freezer. Monday, I'm fixing a turkey dinner for the folks, because we feed them lunch and we feed them dinner. Believe me, this is a fantastic program. I stand on experience. When we lived in Dayton, my husband and I took care of homeless families four weeks a year in our church. We did this for about 10 years, providing food and shelter for homeless families. I have seen the impact. When you go to sleep at night, tonight, think about those that are out there without a blanket or shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Next is Emily Janicek. And then after you will be Brian Thompson. Evening. Sorry to make you sit on the floor.
That's okay. I, I'm in here, I'm here in favor for the grant for the Homeless Coalition. I have a family right now that's at my house right now with their six children, that they are homeless due to the fact that the house that they were living in, the landlord did not properly take care of it, and it was condemned because it was structurally unsafe. So, that one family dwelling that was minus of three, all those families. And I was living in that house, and I happened to move out a month before, because something in my gut told me, "Get out of here." And it took me several months to secure housing here, and I was very blessed to get what I have right now. I'm also, so, right now, this family would benefit from having a program, like a transitional housing program. Two seven-month-old twins, five-year-old, a three-year-old, 11-year-old, 12-year-old, what am I missing? One, two, three, four, there's a lot of them. And they're struggling, and you know, they've been homeless for two months, Catholic Charities has helped them with motels, they have money set aside for deposits that they're going to help them with, but right now currently, Catholic Charities can't help them anymore as far as motels and things like that. They have an RV that's basically gutted that they're working on, that they could try to cram everybody in, and it's in the yard of a woman, that's just, it's difficult to deal with six kids and two adults, so she just wants them in there, but it's not properly, I mean, it's not taken care of yet, it's not built. There's, from experience, I went through the Steps to Recovery Program, and I worked for Steps to Recovery, which is a recovery home. I am one of those recovering addicts that was homeless. If it wasn't for community support in this little town, I wouldn't be where I am right I also suffer from mental illness, and I have spectrum. I went to orientation today for RSA. You know, there's these things in this town that, I went to Standing Rock to protest the pipeline. When I saw the love of all these different people coming out from all over the world to help build, help a community of people that they didn't even know, changed my life. And I came back to this town after that, because I want to make a difference. And it breaks my heart right now to see my friends going through what they're going through. And that's due to no fault of their own. You know, sometimes situations just happen that are so beyond our control that there's nothing we can do, but just ride the wave until it gets better, you know? And during that time, like, it's frustrating, it's hard. Being homeless, I see, what I've seen a lot of is, not that people become homeless because they're drug addicts, but homeless people, to cope with their symptoms, to cope with the stress, to cope with everything that they're going through, will self-medicate. There's some structure, structure is so key when it comes to being in recovery and being homeless, and you need to get into a routine, you need to start feeling good about yourself. And I've seen Rena in action at Steps to Recovery with the grants and stuff, she knows her stuff. And I'm just, I just hit her up the other day, because I went into Circle K, and I saw this guy, and I was like, "You look so familiar, where do I know you from?" I have no idea where he is from. We started talking about, "He's homeless," and this, this, and that, and my friend looked at me like, "No, you're not taking him home." And he was like, I said, "You know, there's services, there's a shelter here, da-da-da-da." He goes, "Yeah, I go to the drop-in center, Rena." I'm like, "Rena, I totally forgot about Rena, oh my God, I want to work with her." You know, so I hit her up the other night, and I was like, "I'm a volunteer, I want to work with you." And then I'm here, you know, in that situation with my friends right now, and everything just comes together, you know? Just, I understand crime and all that stuff, I grew up in New York. This isn't New York, this isn't Chicago, it's not a big city. Fact of the matter is, there's drugs in this town, there's addicts in this town, there is criminals, like, they're not going anywhere, they're still going to be here. You know, so we do need those recovery homes. We do, if we, if we didn't have a hospital in this town, where would sick people go to? We didn't have recovery homes in this town, where would sick people go to? And they learn a new way of life. This isn't like, you know, a free-for-all, this is structure that they want to provide for people so that they can continue to sustain themselves and not have to repeat it, so thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Brian Thompson, you're up next, after you will be Justin Anderson. Evening.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I am, my name is Brian Thompson, I'm actually a native of Cottonwood, I was born and raised here. You can say that, I'm just kidding. So, I'm here to help support the Parks and Recreation Initiative. I'm actually here representing AYSO, which is American Youth Soccer Organization. I'm a board member now for seven years, we are an all-volunteer organization. We are the biggest region probably in the nation, as far as geographically speaking. We involve Cottonwood, Clarkdale, Cornville, Sedona, Jerome, Camp Verde, if I missed one, I should know better, but, oh, Sedona and DOC, thank you. So, we are a big organization, we actually have about 800 youths between the ages of four and 19 in our program. We play, our core program is during the fall, we have a couple of months, and then we have a tournament season with our cream-of-the-crop soccer players that we have from our core program. So, I just wanted to show my support for the Parks and Recreation, because the city, we have two soccer fields that we primarily use over at the fairgrounds, Cottonwood Kids Park. Those are the same two fields that I played soccer on when I grew up there. No lights, which can make it hard to schedule games and also put on any tournaments. We are excited to hear that the possibility of a complex being built where there could be some lighted soccer fields, much like what Camp Verde is doing and has done in the past. And we would love to be able to provide a program for our youth that is much more community-friendly, where we can encompass people from all over the Verde Valley, not just Cottonwood, and provide a good experience for our youth and all the volunteers that are in our organization, referees, coaches, team moms, banner makers, snack bringers, all of that stuff. So, any Saturday, you can come out to a soccer field, and you can feel the sense of community that's there. And if we had a facility that's been proposed with some of this money, then it would be a very, very, very cool day on a Saturday to see the entire Verde Valley and a lot of kids playing soccer, one of the greatest games on the planet. So, in fact, probably the most popular game on the planet, and that's coming from a basketball player. So, that's pretty much what I want to say. I think that there's a, there's a lot of great stories tonight about the needs of this community, and obviously, growing up here my whole life, I've seen it all, and this city has gone in a really good direction. I see a lot of positive things happening, not only in the development of the business businesses, but just everything about this town is much better than it was when I was growing up here as a kid who always said, "Mom, there's nothing to do, what can we do?" So, moving in the right direction, there's going to be something more for our kids to do with the proposed open space that Parks and Recreation is looking to implement. And once again, this would not just be for Cottonwood, this would be for the entire Verde Valley, all those communities involved. And we could bring people from all over the state to come and play, any tournaments that, you know, we just hosted one in Camp Verde where we had 16 teams from, you know, Prescott Flagstaff, the Phoenix area, just to come up and have a day of soccer. And we can't do that in Cottonwood because we don't have the space, we don't have any lights. lights. And that could be a nice, uh, economic boost to the, uh, to the entire community. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate it. Justin Anderson, you're up next, and after you will be Megan Aronson. Evening.
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council, ladies and gentlemen of the council.
You'll need to speak up, I can tell already. Sorry.
I'll quit being so soft-spoken. Um, not to one-up anyone, but I was also born here in Cottonwood, my children were born here in Cottonwood, and my mother was born here in Cottonwood. And all of my nephews and brothers, and I can, I can say that all of our greatest memories, we, just New Year's Day, we were down at Parks and Rec throwing frisbees and all of our kids are down there playing basketball, or, uh, baseball. Um, and there's like so much that, of, of our family's memories that occur there, and that wasn't there when I was a kid. Um, just yesterday, I'm a, I'm a OR nurse, I work in the operating room here at Verde Valley Medical Center, and just yesterday I was interviewing a, uh, a new orthopedic surgeon that's looking at coming here. And one of the questions that he-
Nice, thank you.
Yeah, we can use more surgeons. As hard as it is to find a doctor, finding surgeons is very, very difficult. And one of the things that kept on coming up during that conversation is, what is here for my kids? And the answer kept on going back to Parks and Rec. And from my standpoint, investing in our kids is like the best investment we can do. But this is more than that because there's, in, in the desert, in a place like Verde Valley, the Green Valley, there's water and the use of that wisely with reclaim water and irrigation that, that uses, uh, that wisely to make this even the verdier valley, um, is, is a true asset. So this, investing in Parks and, Parks and Recs is not only investing in our kids, it's investing in a park that adults use, people use from other places, a place where we can host, um, you know, events, um, and also use this other asset, reclaim effluent, in a wise way. I, for years, worked in wastewater treatment before I became an RN, and I can tell you, I've seen some very, very dark things. Um, but to use that stuff wisely in a, in a beautiful way, I, to me, just seems profound. It's a dual, dual investment, um, or triple investment, and if you can think of just, not just the kids, but the overall community as well as using the, the water for white, wise irrigation. So, I don't need five minutes, I just wanted to stop in and say that. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, next is Megan Aronson. After that, it will be Gary Rideout. Evening.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name's Megan Aronson. I've lived in the Verde Valley for over twenty years, um, primarily in Sedona, and then we moved over to Cornville. I'm a mother of four kids under the age of eleven, so I'm sure you can assume which one I'm for. Um, we really just don't have enough for our kids to do in this community. And I know I speak for a lot of moms that are friends of mine that we have felt this for a very long time, people that have been a longtime community members, that have seen this as an ongoing problem. And, you know, you have a very difficult decision in front of you tonight because, you know, I think all of us would like to give a little money to each of them, you know? Every one of them is a good program, especially the Homeless Coalition and, you know, the Habitat for Humanity. But when I look at, when I'm sitting here listening with a very open mind tonight, what I hear is, a lot of these programs support a segment of the community. I feel like the Parks and Rec, whichever one you decide to go with, supports the entire community because we all benefit from it. When there is a place for us to gather, a place for us to bring our children, you know, I usually drive to Sedona to go to parks. I don't usually go to parks here. I like the web, but a lot of the parks here, I have never, I've been to the Old Town Activity Park maybe once or twice in my twenty years in the Verde Valley. It is not a place I want to take my children. And I want it to be a place I want to take my children. I want it to be a place where I can go and interact with my other community members, meet new people, you know, just go lay out a blanket and sit and talk to other people. I lived in Breckenridge, Colorado for a while. We had a little riverfront area, they had a creek running through the whole city, or the whole town, actually. And, you know, people would congregate there every evening at sunset. It was like, um, the scene from City of Angels where they go and watch the sunset at the end of the night. You know, everybody would gather there together, and I feel like that would, that would benefit our entire community, not just one segment. And it sounds to me like a lot of these programs do have a lot of support from the community. The Homeless Coalition's had a lot of people come here tonight and speak in favor of them. That, I think those people could also be opening up their pocketbooks and supporting that, the coalition. Whereas people like me don't feel like there's any way to really contribute to better parks and recreation, you know? How do we affect change in that area? Is there somewhere we can donate to? I'd love to know that. And, and how can we get involved? You know, recently, there was someone that wanted to, um, host a, a candlelight vigil after the, um, shooting that occurred in Cottonwood. You know, where do we do that? You know, the community is looking for places and spaces to be able to come together, and I really feel like that affects everyone's mental health. And like someone else said, the kids are our future. Our kids need to have positive places to go, to be with their other kids, to have, to play sports. We need to have places that are lighted, that we can see. We need to have places where we can walk, where our kids can learn how to ride a bike, and have lots of different options. You know, we live here, and we work here, and we play here, and this is a daily part of our lives. Every day, I'm thinking about going to a park or taking my kids to go do something fun in this area. And we all know that there are very limited resources in this city for the kids. There's Flip City, there's the, the Rec, Rec Center, there's, um, Taekwondo, there's ballet, but these options are so limited compared to anywhere else, that if we could just offer more spaces for us to just be free and roam with our kids, I think it would make a huge impact. I don't envy you making your decision, it's a very tough one. I thank you for doing it, and thank you for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Rideout and then Greg Miranda.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name's Gary Rideout, and I represent two companies, Vets For Hire, we're a local general contractor and Adopt a Vet, a local nonprofit. We have experience in the affordable housing business. We built the Patriot House over on Sixth Street, and currently, we house, uh, six homeless veterans, and, uh, we also created jobs for about four of the people that live there. We're very blessed, but it took a lot of hard work and it took a lot of money and a lot of community support. So, um, I'm here to support Verde Valley Habitat for Humanity because I've seen the work that they do. We've had to, you know, first of all, we received a loan from the USDA for about three-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars to purchase the building. We received a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to rehab the building. Um, we received twenty-two thousand from, uh, Home Depot here in town and, and gift cards for construction materials. And then we had a lot of volunteers. So, once it was built, I can tell you, there's a huge need here, I think we would all agree, for affordable housing, not just in Cottonwood, but throughout the Verde Valley. And we were full in one day, uh, to the point where Catholic Charities, uh, one thing we're not, we're good at building, but we're not good at the social service part of it, and we realize that. So Catholic Charities fortunately leased the property, and they handle the tenants, the rents, the leases, things like that, and the social services that they need. The reason why I support Verde Valley Habitat for Humanity is for a couple of reasons. One, I've seen the building. Um, that, that three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars would be spent, it would be spent well for heating and cooling, which it doesn't have, needs new windows, needs a paint job, needs a new roof, the roof leaks, and maybe we can go on and on and on. Uh, but also, we've been involved with their, uh, Tanya spoke about this, but their Critical Home Improvement, where they pay for a hundred percent of the home improvement for, whether it be an elderly person, very low-income, someone in need. Two examples, um, one home here in Cottonwood, two bathrooms, wall, toilet here, toilet here, it had leaked for probably about a year. The person that was living there didn't have the means to fix it. Uh, we fixed it for Habitat for Humanity and that homeowner, but she would have fallen through the floor on a toilet. The second one was down at Thousand Trails, um, campground, where it was a lady that, her husband was a veteran, um, head-ridden, um, invalid, and she was living in a camper, probably fifteen feet long by ten feet wide, and the deck, there was a deck there, but it was falling apart. They needed a wheelchair ramp to get the gentleman in a hospital bed into the home. We took a, uh, normal thirty-six-inch by eighty-inch front door, took a small little camper door out, framed that and put the door in, and then tore out everything in the bedroom and the doorway just so they could get the gentleman into the room. So, you know, they also do credit counseling, um, to help people get ready to be homeowners. And I don't know if a lot of people know this, but they don't just put, build houses for people, the people that actually, um, are awarded the homes, they actually work on the homes, they build the homes, they help build the homes, and they have, they have sweat equity in there. So, um, but thank you for your time, and like I said, I wanted to support their, their project as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rideout. Greg Miranda, after you will be Ann Shaw. Evening.
Uh, my name's Greg Miranda, and we just, I don't know if I'm too loud or not.
No, you're good.
Uh, we just moved here about six months ago and love it. Like my friend Tim said earlier, this is our forever place, we, we love it here. Um, I'm here for the park service stuff. I've also been homeless, I've also had issues with drugs, and I have found that my mountain bike and being outdoors and skateboarding and stuff like that have been a great investment in my own future and my kids' future. And not, that's about it. I'm just here for, for, uh, the, uh, I completely lost my train of thought, but I've lived in other, other cities like the lady was saying over here, and this place reminds me of a little ver- version of Bend, Oregon, and I ju, I can't wait to see what happens down there at the riverfront. In Bend, Oregon, there's, uh, there's concerts, there's weekly farmers' markets and everything, and I just think it's going to be a great investment. Somebody said that it's going to come around two or threefold, and I agree. And that skate park's helped get my kids off of Fortnite, which is awesome. So, if we can get more stuff like that and get these kids off the technology, like, I'm all for it, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Appreciate it. Okay, last but not least, believe it or not, unless there's any other folks out there that would like to address the council tonight, okay, we'll get you. Miss, Miss Ann, no, you're not, you're not, there was someone, there was someone behind you, so sorry.
Okay. Next to last.
But, good evening, Ms. Shaw.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I am Ann Shaw, I can't, I'm losing my voice. I am currently serving as the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. And, um, really, I, I just want to, I just want to help, well, you, Mr. Olinsky, you may be the only council member who realizes that we have put the, um, the plan, you know, doing a master plan for the community on the budget every year for at least the last ten years. Um, the, the city stream of money has not hit that yet. Um, we are looking for those funds so that we can do the master plan which will benefit the entire community for many years to come. This is something important to get done, it's the twenty-first century, we need to get this done. We need to get it in the bank and on the bank account. As far as Parks and Recreation is concerned, we have done some good work on parks planning, but we need more than that. We need to, to be looking at our open space issues and looking at broader community involvement If we don't get it done now, when? When, when is this going to be, um, a priority for us if we're not going to do it now? Uh, we think that the time has come, this is important to the entire community, um, not, pardon me, not just the kids, but, but everyone. You know, virtually everyone in the community has the opportunity to enjoy the benefits of, of the, the parks that we have, the recreation center, all of the facilities that we have, but they do have to be maintained and improved, and they have to be planned for. So, I, you know, I'm hopeful that, that this is the moment, that that plan, that master plan will see the funding that it needs to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Just, if you could pass over here, please, that'd be fine. Thank you. Evening.
My name is Kara Wood, I'm here in support of Parks and Rec as well. I do have two young children, and I think everyone else that spoke on Parks and Rec touched on everything that I believe in as well. But we do travel to Sedona a lot in the summer to go to the splash, splash pad. Um, I went to the Parks and Rec meeting, that was about a month ago, when they had all the displays and all the different ideas. Um, there were several different, um, options as far as the bike trail, a splash pad, um, more play areas, shaded areas, soccer fields. I think any, any one of those ideas would be great, and it would be great for the whole community. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thanks, Ms. Wood. Appreciate your time. Any other folks out there? Okay, no worries. Ms. Riffle, welcome.
Do you want this?
Yes, please, thank you.
Uh, my name is Rebecca Riffle, and I'm a business owner here and a community member. Um, I grew up in Sedona. I feel like I'm a big part of this community, um, and I feel like what would make myself most proud and most people I know is having an amazing, wonderful park. Um, and I think that the majority of the citizens would really benefit from that. Um, I think it would help everybody and not just one small sector of our community. Um, I think that Elaine does an amazing job at the Senior Center. I think that there obviously is a big, um, issue with homelessness that has been brought up tonight, but I think that there's other ways that we can allocate those funds to help those, um, community members as well. I think that I'd be really proud of Conwood, um, being able to have a great place for kids to go and for this community to go to, so, that's got my vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, I believe now we'll go ahead and close the floor. Before we move on, I just want to say, uh, to all of you who stayed for two and a half hours here tonight to, to speak, takes a lot of dedication and for many of you, a lot of courage to come up before the council and, and speak your mind and your heart, and I really do appreciate it. Again, we have a very difficult decision to make, as you are all aware, so, uh, we're going to do our best to kind of work through this, and I'm sure that we all have, are coming from different perspectives. Uh, we do have to try to build consensus, and we're going to do that awkwardly in front of you right now and try to figure out how, how best to spend the three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars that, uh, the, uh, CDBG funds that have been awarded us. So, um, again, this is not easy for us, and, um, you know, the good news is, we have three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, the bad news is, four out of five of you won't get it unfortunately for this go-around. Um, of course, every four years, we're awarded some amount of money, um, which may be small comfort to those of you who aren't awarded tonight, but, again, thanks for being here. And I've just, and I, I'm being honest, I've never been prouder of my community. Um, so many came out tonight to support what's most important to you, and it's just a very proud moment for me as mayor and as I'm sure for all the council members to see such a great turnout. I know we've lost a lot, um, of folks who are here, but really, to stick around for two and a half hours to, to, to rally for what you truly believe in is, is great, and I'm proud of you all for being here. So, council, how would you like to proceed with this?
And I'll just say, I mean, I agree, I wish we could give, you know, money, money to all of them. I, I went from, oh, wow, that's a great, to, oh, wow, that's a- Um, it's, it's gonna, it's very hard to choose, and, and everybody here did just a wonderful, wonderful job.
I agree, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a way to work through this. Um, I mean, uh, parks are the crown jewel in any city's crown. Um, I've never been homeless, but I've been that close. I always had a roof over my head, and it motivated me to really work my ass off and not get there. Um, so that's, I, I, I do, I'll tell you, I work closely with Habitat for Humanity, and, and I deal with these people. And we help people that are also that close to homelessness, um, because if we don't do what we're doing to their homes, that's it. They're, they're, they're done, they're going to be condemned. I work for the Senior Center, and, and I deal, I see the people, every week I go in that center and I see the people who are there, and I, I, I interact with several of them very personally when I go out and deliver those meals. So this is, this is almost impossible. So, I mean, I have, I have a vested interest to see everybody benefit from this, and I know it can't be done, so, work me through it.
I also concur. I think all five, uh, organizations tonight are very important. All of you are worthy of receiving the funding. Unfortunately, as Mayor Olinsky has pointed out, only one will. Unfortunately, as Mayor Olinsky has pointed out, only one will. So then it becomes a problem of trying to, uh, categorize all five organizations. How do we service all of you at the same time, or try to figure out who is the most likely to benefit at this moment, and how can we generate more income from the city to provide serv- or monies for other services, other organizations? And that's the problem that we're going to have to work through tonight, is to try to prioritize the five of you. My goal would be to try to figure out which one of the five will be the most prosperous for not only the organization itself, but also to help benefit the city by bringing in more income. By bringing in more income, then the city is in a better position to provide services to the unfortunate four that aren't going to be selected tonight. And that's pretty much how I'm going to be viewing things tonight, so you know. Who can bring the most income, and at the same time, benefit the most number, or the, the largest number of the population? Who can bring the most economic development to the city and to the Verde Valley, which in turn brings money to the city to allow us then to go back to the other organizations and say, "We have money now that we can give to you to support you." Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hartigan?
Yes, thank you. Just to echo what everybody else said, it's, it's not an easy thing to go through here. Uh, I am looking at this point of supporting the homeless transitional housing. I think that's a, a basic need. Uh, around my house where I live, I had, uh, there's a building there, and, and part of the building comes into, uh, like, a, a V corner, uh, you know, building on either side. And there was a huge tree in front of it, and behind that, every year since I've been there, people lived there. You could hear them talking at night. Uh, obviously, some weren't real neat, there was stuff all over the, the area sometimes. And I saw all ages there. And as a matter of fact, here, a few weeks ago, came to my attention that I woke up in the morning, and, and it's like, uh, all the police, all the fire, all the paramedics were across the street from me, and that's what woke me up. And come to find out that, uh, that building next, uh, across the street from us was, was on fire. And what happened, uh, this fellow that I know, uh, homeless, um, he's one of the guys that didn't run out of that little corner I was talking about. And not having any place else to go, I guess, and not feeling he had any other options at that time, he went between the, the little, uh, brick wall and, and the wall of the, of the building, and he set himself up there and he started a fire. The fire got away from him, okay? And evidently, from what I read, uh, uh, he, he tried all he could to, to put the fire out, unfortunately, he did it with his bare hands, and they ended up transporting him to Phoenix to, uh, to get care for that. So, uh, I've seen it, I've had a lot of people in my neighborhood that are obviously homeless, uh, uh, and, and a lot of them are veterans. I think it's a shame in this country that we have people go out and, and, uh, do their duty, uh, as, as I feel, and, uh, like Spin said before, that through no fault of their own, end up homeless, you know? And then, of course, the issue of mental illness is one that I don't think gets enough, uh, recognition. I don't think people, uh, obviously, they don't understand it. Uh, I think they try to force people to believe the way they do, and that's not what's happening. So, there, there is a need there. So, I am, uh, sitting here tonight in support of the homeless, uh, transitional housing.
I think it's been said, and I'm gonna echo, that each of these applications is fantastic. Um, I know we've talked about winners and losers tonight, but personally, I will be happy with whomever the council as a collective body selects for these funds. I'm excited about each of these projects. Um, I also wanna thank everybody also echoing my fellow council members for the time, the thought, and, and just working with us to, to express your, your goals and dreams for these funds, so thank you. We can't fund each of these projects tonight, but personally, I hope that we've started discussion and possible collaboration with each of these groups and each of these projects for the future. I'd like to see that, you know, again, whomever we can't fund tonight, if we can, work with these organizations in the future, uh, that would be my goal. Like I said, I'll be happy with whichever one of these applications, uh, is selected. But personally, when I was looking through the packet and the information that was provided, some of which has been discussed tonight, but there is a lot more information in the packet, my focus was which of these projects will do the most good for the greatest number of people for the longest term. And I'm just one person up here, but from my review of the packet and the information, I do have to agree with the Parks and Rec proposal. I think that it, it addresses more than one segment, it addresses most of the segments of our community and also outside of our community, um, and so personally, that, that would be, um, my, my first choice. And it was a hard choice, so.
As I said earlier, this is probably the toughest, I've been on council for like two and a half years, but I've been with the city for a long time. One of the toughest decisions I've ever seen the council have to make, because we did used to be able to break these funds up and get the biggest bang for our buck. And when the fetters were put on our hands, "So, we cannot do that anymore," it put us into an extremely difficult position. Now, uh, I will say that I was once a homeless person. I lived in a hotel with a one-year, less than one-year-old child, and it was a traumatic event. It was extremely hard. So I understand the passion, I understand the emotion that goes with that, um, the individuals that were speaking tonight spoke from the heart, you could see, it was their whole world. Um, and I understand the need that we have for transitional housing. I know Angie does a great job, she has never turned someone away that the Police Department has asked them, her to take in, um, so she does a great job. We've had a great job, once we were able to get off the ground, Raina, and get that, um, the drop-in centers, thank gosh for those. This is the coldest winter we've had, thank goodness your doors were open this winter. Um, like, uh, Councilmember Henry, what is our biggest bang for our buck? Where can we do the most good? I'd love to pull my purse open if there was anything but mops in it, and give you all something, 'cause it is so hard. Um, I'm also the mother of six, so those people that spoke on the recreation center, I understand that. I understand the need to get the kids in a good place. Um, I don't live too far from, um, Councilmember Hartigan, I live in the low-rent district, so I understand that portion of it, too. I have the most amazing perspective, to be able to see all the sides of the coins that are in front of me. Um, who, what is the largest number of citizens that are going to be impacted? Um, and I can't dismiss the, the homeless, and I'm not a believer of not in my backyard, we have them here, we need to take care of them. That's just the way it is. But as a council member, it is, I am contingent to serve the entire population, not just a small category of the population. And if I can do that with the information that's put in front of me, that's what I need to do. Um, I'm almost constrained to do that. So, um, like, uh, Ms. Henry, I'm leaning towards the Parks and Recreation, um, choice, because I understand we have very little, and, and my husband said, "What are they gonna do, fire you?" So I'm leaving. [laughter] But I, we have a lot of, uh, facilities that will help here in Cottonwood. We have a lot of people that are in unfortunate circumstances, but to be able to, to step back and look forward and see how many people will this affect? Will it bring in more housing? Will it bring in bigger businesses? Will we get those doctors in our city that we need that don't stay? We get so many doctors that come to our hospital, love the hospital, they have no housing that they want, they have no parks that they want, the parks they want to be expanded in what we have. So, right now, like, like Ms. Henry, that's where I'm leaning.
Very good. Um, I, we'll tell you where I stand now. Um, again, like everyone has said, and I agree with Councilmember Henry, I wouldn't be disappointed wherever this money goes tonight. But I too stand with the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, and I'll explain why. Um, and I'll give you some context, too, on my decision. Now, we're just coming out of our strategic planning retreat, and, uh, some of the biggest things that came up during our retreat were, um, the need for, uh, workforce housing, being very critical to not just Cottonwood, but the entire Verde Valley. Um, and some of the biggest hindrances that we have in our community are poverty. We talked a lot about poverty during our retreat, and many of you in the room tonight were able to present during our retreat, and I think, um, being a community that's impoverished, and in fact, the reason why we're eligible to spend this money in a wider array of functions is because most of us are low to moderate income here. So, we're, we're a community that just, about 22% of us live in poverty, more than half of us live low to moderate, so, um, that, that impedes growth in a lot of different ways. Um, and that is why I think if we can offer some sort of, um, solution for folks who more and more are experiencing homelessness for a variety of reasons, offer a solution where they can focus, uh, on getting a job and getting back to work, getting back to being productive, uh, members of our society, the, the, the one thing they need absolutely, and studies will show, is housing first. First, housing, give them that security, then they can move on and, um, get back to work. Now, I think when a lot of us think of homeless individuals, we conjure up images of the folks that we see panhandling, or the folks that we see, uh, drinking in alleys, or, or whatever that, that image of folks in your, in your mind. Um, but I, along with other council members, have volunteered a project, Connect, in the area, and, um, which is a program where we, uh, happens only once a year, happens more often in, in larger municipalities, but it's a, it's a program where we try to connect those experiencing homelessness to the services that they need to, to do better, to get back on their feet. Um, and I can tell you that the, the first time I agreed to volunteer, um, those images that I conjured up in my head of the homeless people that I would be interacting with, um, uh, you know, I, I was just blown away by the, by the faces that walked through that door, and, um, these are people that I work with, have worked with, people that I know and respect, I mean, they are members of our community. Um, and it's, it was a little alarming, I have to admit, and, so I don't think, there, I know there are fears of, uh, some folks have called this a, um, a, uh, a housing project, a, a halfway home. Um, I think this is really just an opportunity for us to help those residents in our community who have been down and out for reasons that could affect all of us at any moment, get back on their feet, provide that bridge. Uh, I don't think we're going to be attracting more homeless or, um, homeless-resistant folks to our area, I think we'll just be caring for the community that we already live with. Um, now, that said, the, the open space, the Wayfinding Master Plan, um, is a very strong contender, all of these are strong contenders. What, what has tipped the scales for me really is, um, also to provide context for my decision, we raised the sales tax by a half percent, I don't know if you heard about it or not, but [laughter] but we did, we have three places where the council, uh, wanted to spend that money. One was infrastructure, one was, um, pay down, uh, our public safety, personnel retirement debt, um, and the other was to sock money away for reserves. So those are really council's three priorities. Um, in my mind, infrastructure would include parks, because these are the, the basic things that we need to make our community clean, attractive, and, and, in a, in a place to call home, which I think many of you spoke to tonight. So, I'm confident that moving forward, if this council decides to, to set aside that half percent sales tax and really allocate that toward infrastructure improvements in our community, that very well could mean an accelerated, uh, uh, that we would acceler- accelerate programs like, uh, funding the open space and everything. And I know it's been on Parks and Rec budget for indefinitely, I mean, for time immemorial, we've been talking about it and talking about it, but I'm hoping with that half cent sales tax increase, that we really will make serious headway on funding some of those improvements that our community desperately needs. And I, I'm humbled and I'm encouraged to see so many, I had no idea there were so many young families in, in Cottonwood, it was really kind of amazing for me to see, I think, we must not cross paths, 'cause you're over in Sedona with your children. [laughter] And I'm here in Cottonwood with my kids, uh, picking up trash and, 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 I don't mean that in a bad way, I just mean that we literally go there, because I do wanna be reminded day in, day out, that our, our parks need help, and I'm taking my kids to the parks that need help, um, because it is our community. And I'm not blind to the fact that we need to improve our parks and provide a better quality of, of life, um, so it's a strong contender. Verde Valley Senior Center, I'm a huge supporter, proponent, I try to do all I can in my capacity to help fund your program, um, to, to help you do the great work that you do. Um, there are, there are other funding mechanisms that I hope you and I can talk about, where maybe even there's a, a local grant, uh, program that Councilmember Matthews and I have helped to promote in, through the Verde, for the Historic Preservation Commission, which could be another source of funding for you to do some of the improvements to your property, um, so we, we should definitely talk about that and try to get that going forward. The Habitat for Humanity Restore, um, again, something else that came up during our retreat was, like you said, lack of, lack of workforce housing, and you are one of the few builders in the area that provide that, um, workforce housing. Now, there's a growing movement, um, in the Verde Valley, which came up at our mayor-manager meeting, has come up in, in our governmental meetings, that we really want to start having a very broad, community-wide discussion about workforce housing and what we're really gonna do to move the needle, uh, it's very critical in our area, so, um, I do support you, I would not be disappointed if the money went to you in any way, shape, or form, um, in whatever way I can, as a local builder, I, I'm constantly dropping stuff off for you, to try to help [laughter] try to help your, uh, your, your program there. And of course, the Old Town Activity Park Improvements, I think, is also a very, uh, strong contender, um, because I think it's an underutilized park, but again, I think with that half-cent sales tax increase, I believe that we'll be able to put some more money aside for those such programs. And again, tipping the scales for me was the amount of, um, area agencies, um, community service providers, law enforcement, uh, that, that has come out in support of the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. I think it speaks volumes to not just the community need, but the faith in that organization. Um, and that is what helped me make my decision.
It's, so, I didn't, you guys kind of, I didn't say, and I don't believe Michael did, uh, either, um, and, and, again, I would be happy with all, um, but I agree with Councilmember Henry and Vice Mayor Allen, that, um, the Parks and Recreation, um, it represents the largest amount of people in our community, it represents the whole community instead of a, a segmented, so, and you guys are gonna make me pick one tonight, so that would be my first, would, I would be with, um, Councilmember Henry and Allen.
Oh, it's tough.
Sorry, I put you on the spot, but I felt like
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm listening to all this very intently, I mean, I can, I can see already, unfortunately, my, my two pet projects are, are gonna be the minority. Um, they all have a need, I, I agree with, um, Ms. Henry, that this gives us an opportunity to see where the need is and where we might be able to help further. Um, with the Senior Center, the Historic Preservation Commission should do what they can to get some kind of grant money to work on that building. I would love to, to be a part of that. Um, I'm still, I'm still mulling
The drum roll.
[laugh] I'm still. Um, I do understand with the parks, and that it does benefit the, the largest part of our community, um, and I know we have a homeless problem. Um, Parks and Recreation, well, and, and so, to tell you how sincere I am about seriously considering parks is, uh, there's a lot of negative stuff going on over, in the last year, over at the Parks and, and the Rec Center, um, a lot of misinformation, a lot of people making up things, going to a lot of trouble to do that. Um, I'm not gonna hold that against them. I, I think it's something that's very, very important for this, I don't wanna see any of them closed, never have, um, I'm, I'm condescending towards that.
Okay. Richard?
I, as I said earlier, weighing all five, uh, projects, you're all very well-qualified, but looking at it from, I guess, if I at it from, I guess, a financial standpoint and also from the child standpoint, we have 2,000-plus children that need places to go. We received this statement about why improve parks and other community facilities, and I received information from Hezekiah Allen about Oklahoma City, and how they struggled until they developed their parks, and once they developed their parks, they suddenly had businesses, they had doctors, all the things that we need in the Verde Valley. They also had additional funds to take care of the other projects that they wanted to do, such as Habitat, the homeless, the Senior Center, all of these are quality, and I may have forgotten one, but at any rate, I support the parks. This is something that's been in the works for at least 18 years, and as Vice Mayor pointed out, kept getting put behind everything else, there just wasn't money for it. Now, we're finding out that we may have stubbed our own toe by ignoring our parks for all these years, if we actually wanted to improve the quality of our city. And for that reason, I would support the park management plan.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion from council?
Do you want a motion?
It will be time to make a motion.
I'll be the one to fall on the sword. I move to approve Resolution Number 2975, authorizing the submission of a 2019 CDBG Funding Cycle Application to the State of Arizona for the Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Wayfinding Master Plan Irrigation Design and Phase One Implementation Project.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion, Councilmember Hulse seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdick?
No.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
No. And so, the motion passes, and again, like I said, not upset whoever gets the funds, but I do have to vote my conscience, so, thank you very much.
It's a hard, hard decision.
And thanks to all of you tonight for coming in, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we take a five-minute break to let people... What's that?
A resolution?
A resolution?
Can we take five minutes? Five minutes, let it clear out. Where we left off then, if we could, please have the city clerk read Resolution Number 2975 by title only.
Resolution Number 2975, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application for fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds, certifying that the application meets the community's previously identified housing and community development needs and the requirements of the state CDBG program, and authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in the application. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number three under new business is ordinance number 656, meaning title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16, Operation of Vehicles of the Municipal Code Regarding Distracted Driving. This is the first reading. Evening, Chief.
Mayor, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Surprised you're all still here. We came out, we were supposed to empty seats, it's a long.
Don't tempt me.
Don't tempt you. In all seriousness, thank you for your deliberation on that CDBG money. That's very unfortunate that all that money has to go to one of these projects, because they're all very well-deserved, as you noted. So, we'll try to move as expediently as we can. I think this one will probably have a lot more logic and a little less emotion, so hopefully it'll be an easier deliberation for you. So, tonight, we're presenting proposed ordinance focusing on reducing deaths, injuries, and property damage related to distracted driving. A little background, switch the, by switching view. I just, what Rudy's trying to set up is just one simple slide, so I can move while he's trying to set it up, and if it doesn't work, we're still good. A little background, as you saw in your packet, 47 out of 50 states currently have some form of law restricting mobile phones while driving. Thank you, sir. Out of those 47, 21 banned the use of mobile phones without a hands-free device. So, currently in Arizona, Arizona does have some legislation addressing the issue, but it's very narrowly focused on school bus drivers, and those with a graduated driver's license, which are essentially people under the age of 18, trying to learn how to be good drivers. Those are the, and that one just recently passed in 2018, focused on the graduated driver. The state has fallen short, and over a number of years, there have been attempts in the state legislature to produce a statewide statute addressing the use of electronic devices, specifically phones with hands-free, and those have all failed. In this county, in Yavapai, we are, again, very fortunate to collaborate very well with our neighbors throughout the county, both on this side in the Verde and on the other side of the mountain in the Prescott region. Last year, County Supervisor Jack Smith testified before the state legislature's Transportation Committee, making a plea to the state legislature to enact, once again, to enact a law governing the use of mobile phones. Although it was unanimously passed in that committee, it failed at the legislature once As such, the county led the way, in Yavapai County, and drafted pretty much the ordinance that we're bringing before you today, with very few, very little deviation from their original verbiage. Since the county's adoption of the ordinance in October of last year, I believe, cities to include Prescott, Prescott Valley, and Chino Valley have adopted the ordinance mirroring the county's ordinance. I believe Jerome considered it perhaps tonight, but I know they are considering, don't quote me on the date, but they're considering it as you are tonight. Believe it or not, Cottonwood has led the way also in the area of distracted driving in this county, and we've had an existing ordinance that addressed distracted driving and actually mentions use of a cellphone or a mobile phone with a hands-free device. The ordinance is in dire need of revision, some of the verbiage is antiquated, and it's questionably enforceable. This would provide an opportunity, if you were to choose to adopt this ordinance, would provide an opportunity to essentially replace and repeal that section of the municipal It's also important for me to mention the difference between a primary and a secondary offense. Okay, so, a primary offense would be an offense, either a state statute, in this case, we're talking about a municipal code, that enables a police officer to, in this case, stop a motorist if he or she sees a, has a reasonable suspicion to believe that an offense has occurred. Okay? A secondary would be if another state statute is violated, and then that statute or ordinance as part of that collective incident, there's a reasonable suspicion, then it can be cited, that would be a secondary offense. The way our current ordinance is written is a secondary offense. So, our officers could not, if they saw someone that was talking on their phone without a hands-free device, our current ordinance would not allow them to make a stop, because it is a secondary offense. Does that make sense to you all? So, the county's ordinance is written, and the one that's been modeled by the cities in Yavapai County, which I've delineated, is a primary offense, and that's the one that's brought to you today, just so you understand the difference in moving from what we currently have, which most cities in Arizona don't even have what we had. So, again, kudos to the city, and I'm not sure of the origin of our municipal code in that regard, but I think we are ahead of our day in drafting that. I think it's, at this point in time, proper time for you to consider moving forward, adopting this particular ordinance, for a number of reasons, which I'll touch on here in a second. The ordinance, as it's proposed, like I said, is very, very similar to the county's ordinance. Chino Valley has done the same thing, Prescott Valley has done the same thing, and Prescott proper has as well, with the intent to collectively reduce the confusion of drivers that travel from community to community within our county, not knowing. If we didn't have this type of collaboration in our county, the laws would be different in each community, which would create confusion for the motoring public, and would be difficult for us to, quite frankly, educate the public on the nuances and different distracted driving laws in each individual community in the county. Glancing at today's social media, I think it's probably pertinent for me to mention that I think there's some people out there that have an understanding that if the county adopts an ordinance, all the municipalities within the county are subject to that ordinance, and that's not the case. The county's ordinance only applies to unincorporated county areas. Ask Mr. Horton if he has any comments, if I'm on track here, or if he'd like to make any comments regarding the legality of such a proposed ordinance.
Well, I think the chief's done a commendable job of leaving very little for the lawyer to add. I think it's a comprehensive presentation. I think he did want me to maybe touch on with the, to the extent there's any concern that the state legislation that's moving through may, would impact. There is no problem, the way the bill, well, so, there was a bill just recently dropped, and the way it's written, and I don't see it changing, because the way for the state to prevent local government from legislating in an area is either to occupy that field or to specifically say so in the proposed legislation. The bill that's currently now under consideration, or about to be under consideration, doesn't do that, and I certainly, given the climate, I don't see that happening. I don't see the state attempting to preclude a regulation that does not conflict directly with the state law, and this does not.
Thank you, Mr. Horton, and I'd like to add some commentary to what our city attorney just said, that if you're interested, the House bill that was introduced yesterday by Senator Kavanaugh is HB 2069, which unfortunately falls short of the comprehensive nature of the ordinance that's before you today, and that has been adopted throughout our county. The House bill that's, like I said, it was just introduced yesterday, focuses solely on texting. And I can tell you, from a law enforcement perspective, there's significant challenges with enforcing a texting ban, particularly if it's secondary offense. You might as well not even waste your time in legislating, in my opinion. If it's a primary offense, it still becomes very challenging to prove in a court of law that the person was not talking on their phone rather than texting. They could be dialing a phone number, there's many, many defenses that a defendant could bring to court, which essentially kind of eviscerates the effectiveness of a texting-only ordinance, in your police chief's humble opinion. Would you like to add to that, counselor?
I agree.
And just lastly, I'll throw out, as if we needed more justification, I mean, there's no question that distracted driving costs thousands of lives across the country, untold number of injuries, and incredible amount of property damage, very difficult to quantify, though, there's a lot of it self-reported after the fact, after there's a collision, trying to discern whether there was a distracted driving variable influencing the collision or not. The only stat we were able to find is the U.S. Department of Transportation, through NHTSA, reported that around 3,500 people died in 2015 due to distracted driving incidents, although we can presume that that actual number is significantly higher for the reasons that I just mentioned. Today, and I've neglected to mention, I'm joined by Commanders McCouch and Braxton, and if you'll notice, we're all wearing bad shrouds today, or Officer Clayton Townsend, Salt River Indian Police Department officer that was tragically killed on the 101 allegedly by a distracted driver, and was put to rest earlier today. I think that underscores the fact that our culture has to embrace a change, and many times, that cultural shift is, there needs to be elected leaders that step up to the plate and that codify what's right and wrong. And in this case, we know, I think if you ask anybody on the street, and even if you look at some of the commentary on the social media that's just come up today on our posting, people overwhelmingly recognize the danger of distracted driving, and I think they overwhelmingly recognize the government's need to... recognize the government's need to set the standard here. If you choose to adopt the, go back to my notes here, and I am proud to say that my notes are kind of wrinkled because they were caught in the rain. In Arizona, that's a good thing, so I will not complain. But in closing, if you, as a council, choose to implement the ordinance, we would institute a, obviously, adopt the ordinance, we would choose to enact an implementation plan that would surround itself in the public education arena, and the plan would be ninety days focusing on education rather than enforcement after council chooses to adopt. So when it's enacted, you'd have sixty more days before we would write our first citation. We would be active on social media and trying to use the media outlets that we have available to us, and also contacts that our staff has with the public in the meantime to ensure that the public was aware of the impending change in the ordinance. With that, staff's recommendation to council is to adopt the ordinance 656 that you have informed before you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chief Gazelle?
I just have a statement.
Sure.
I think probably everybody sitting in this room has done it at least once. Looked at your phone while you're driving and then freaked yourself out because you probably realized you weren't concentrating on the road. With the technology available today, and the city of Cottonwood's never afraid to be the first person out there to make this step, and though we're not this time around, I think it would behoove us to do it. The technology is not outrageously expensive as it was even two years ago to do a hands-free device. Most newer cars, you hook your phone up to your radio and you talk to your radio. It's just that the availability of that technology is there. We are able to never have an excuse to text or be distracted while we're driving with our cell phone, so I will be completely supportive of this.
Same thing. I mean, it's a no-brainer, but we all know also that an ordinance isn't going to stop anybody from doing anything. So, and in fact, I had an experience six weeks ago, I was coming up Interstate 17 in the northbound lanes, just back past Black Canyon City, and the lady in front of me made a U-turn and drove by me like this. Fortunately, I mean, I don't think anything happened. I think she figured it out pretty quickly. I tried waving her down and stopping, but, so I mean, I've seen it, and you see it around town. So the one thing I would ask you to do, enforce it. Start writing tickets. It's a small town where it'll get out, and that, I think, is the best motivation to get people to think twice about doing something like that, so work it.
Something else I've noticed is that when you go into Sedona, and I don't go to take my kids to play, I go for Chinese food. There's a sign, you know, as you're coming in that says, "We are hands-free," or something like that, you know? And I would encourage, you know, some signage as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Althouse, and I was remiss in failing to mention, the city of Sedona has had an existing ordinance, freestanding ordinance for that city since 2014, written, obviously different than the one we're proposing tonight, but certainly proactive nonetheless.
All right. Any other comments?
Well, it's safe to assume then that Sedona's ordinance hasn't been challenged in court as being unlawful. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And the county's hasn't been challenged, so if we were to adopt the same ordinance as the county, we should be in good stead.
One would think. I mean, it was just recently adopted, but...
I have absolutely no concerns about the lawfulness of this. Matter of fact, this is pretty soft. I mean, as council knows, and for the record, this is a civil traffic violation. We're not even criminalizing this behavior.
So it would not carry points?
On a civil traffic violation? I don't believe so.
It's not a moving violation, so I don't think it would...
It would be moving too.
But it's certainly an opportunity, I think, to Councilman Matthews' point, for education, whenever somebody is either pulled over for something else and seen doing this or pulled over for this. I think that's the goal.
Definitely is a hazard when they're on the road, because they're not paying attention to their driving.
Anything else?
I just want to chime in quickly, because it is late, and say thank you. This is great. I'm glad we're addressing it, and I appreciate that you're being proactive about this. It is something I think we all deal with on a weekly basis, somebody being distracted on the roadway, whether it's their phone or otherwise. This is a very big positive step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I would agree a hundred percent supportive. Are there any folks here tonight? This is just the first reading. It's a public hearing, really. Are there any folks here to speak in support, speak against this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the floor, and we'll bring it back for a second reading, I agree. Hearing consensus there, and if we could please have the city clerk read ordinance number 656 by Todd Lonely.
Ordinance number 656, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16, Operation of Vehicles of the Municipal Code by deleting Section F under Section 10.16.050, Miscellaneous Traffic Enforcement Rules, and adding a new Section 10.16.080, Use of Electronic Devices. Mr. Mayor?
Very good. Thank you. Thanks to the two commanders, too, for your work on this. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to second to last item is number four, annual appointment of council representatives to various organizations, committees, and boards related to intergovernmental, regional, and other matters. And it's not fair, because you're out now, so...
Yeah, babe. No, they're fun, they're enjoyable, they're wonderful things to participate in, so good luck.
Yeah, thank you. So, do you want me to lead on this, Marianne, or did you want to?
No, it's mine.
Okay, so for the new ones here with us, we do this once a year. We go through all the boards and committees and everything that the council participates on, and we ask folks if there's any interest or renewed interest to remain on the board or committee. You know, so with the vice mayor now stepping down, I think we may have another opportunity, depending on how we work through that process, to get somebody else involved. I don't know if you all want to table this discussion until we have a new council member, or if you want to go ahead and move forward and discuss these committees and go ahead and assign representatives. It's completely up to you.
My opinion would be if, there's nothing that just absolutely has to be filled at this moment or changed, that we do wait till we bring on somebody.
I think that's prudent.
Okay. Okay, then I would motion to table this item.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote?
Motion to table, Councilmember Althouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse.
Yes.
Councilmember Howdig is not here. Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes, thank you. Okay, next item, annual appointment of vice mayor. We can't table this one, unfortunately. So again, this is something that I wanted to come back every year for the council to discuss and see if there's any interest among us to serve in this capacity. So again, as the vice mayor can attest, it's title only, but please do, yeah.
I want to thank the council for allowing me to be the vice mayor for this last year. It's been a growing experience, it's been a great experience, and it's not to fulfill the ego, but because of the way people receive you, they are so pleased when you attend their events, when you attend their ribbon cuttings, because they feel validated for what they've done, for their job, for their new business, for whatever reason you are attending, it's an incredible feeling to be able to feel like you've made a difference in their lives. Not only that, but the numerous committees and commissions you attend and the amount of information that you glean to bring back to your own community to improve it, and I have to say, I will miss not knowing everything that's going on. So I may reach out to one or two people now and again, but thank you very much to the council for allowing me to serve for that year.
It's our pleasure. You did a great job. Vice Mayor was present in many more functions than I could ever hope to attend, and I know, because I've received a lot of feedback, it does mean a lot to folks when the vice mayor, or really any council member, but particularly the mayor, the vice mayor. So her ability to be at all those functions was, you just can't put a price on it, it really meant a lot.
That being said, I am the only retiree on the council. Everybody else sitting up here has a job. Well, Doug is a retiree, aren't you?
Yep.
Okay. Doug, when'd you get a job? So it's tough, because you have a job and you have to juggle those figures, but it can be done. So I have faith in anybody, just about anybody sitting up here, to take the position of vice mayor and be able to serve it well.
And along those lines, something I've discussed with our new manager, Corbin, is that we work on a shared calendar, so that the council can all be aware of the events that are going on and who's going to be representing the city council at those events, because I know it is critical, and you and I have spoke about this, fortunately, you'll be stepping down, you won't be able to see the fruits of our discussion, but it does mean a lot, and I think we all have very busy schedules, and I think having council representation, elected leadership representation at some of these meetings, ribbon cuttings, et cetera, throughout the community is important. So to that end, I'm hoping Mr. Corbin's working on a plan to get some sort of a shared calendar to help us utilize technology to jump into the 21st century. I'll probably be the most difficult to train on that, but I'll do my best.
Yes, he will.
Don't have to worry about texting and driving with me, because I don't even know how to pick up the phone, to be honest with you, but anyway, that's separate from this discussion. So the reason, again, that we bring this up is just to see if there's any other folks among us that would like to serve in that capacity. The only really critical thing, from my perspective anyway, and it's in code, is that should I die or get bludgeoned to death by people who didn't get the CDBG funds? The vice mayor must step in and represent the city as CEO, so there is that very important role of vice mayor. But otherwise, it really is its title, which is important, but they would need to, is there something else I'm missing?
Well, slightly less dramatic, if you miss a meeting, the vice mayor will preside over the meeting.
I don't miss very many meetings.
No, he does not.
You don't die very often, either.
No, no. It's been largely exaggerated, right, to quote Mark Twain? Anyway, getting back on topic here.
Well, I have some thoughts.
Yes.
Not that I'm very opinionated. I do agree with you that somebody that isn't elected should not serve as vice mayor. I also believe that newly elected should probably not serve as vice mayor. May disagree with me, I think we should not change the vice mayor every year just to give somebody a chance to do it. I think it should be something that, because it kind of, I think it just kind of cheapens that. I think it should be left up to council to decide and maybe keep the same person as vice mayor instead of just jostling around to a different person every year, but that's, that is only my opinion. But I do have a motion to make, if anybody's willing to hear it.
Is there any other discussion from council?
I'd like to, yeah. So Councilmember Henry was nominated last year as well, and there was a concern, you know, working full-time, I had the same concern, but I want to say that she's really stepped up, and I've seen you at a lot of events, and you've proved us, you know, wrong, that you can't make time out of your very busy day, working full-time, and be at events, and be there and do stuff, and I've been very impressed, and so Councilmember Henry has my full support in doing this.
Make a nomination?
Sure.
I nominate Councilmember Henry Tosca Henry for the position of vice mayor.
Okay, so we have, would you, before we go into motion making?
Well, thank you for your confidence. My one concern is the time aspect, but, you know, I think we can make time for the events, and if we do have other coverage, then it might be possible, so...
And again, that's why I bring up the concept of this calendar, because I know that we all want to be at these events, and I think if we had a way to make sure that there was some coverage from council, I think that would help us all. We should all be doing better, myself included, believe me. So council, Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Hulse seconded it. Could we please have a roll call vote? City clerk?
Well, it wasn't really a motion. She moved, did you move to nominate, or did you nominate?
I nominate Councilmember Tosca Henry for the position of vice mayor.
You moved to nominate?
Yes.
A point?
A point, a point, sorry. Yes.
Okay.
We're tired. I'm usually in bed by now.
Motion to appoint Councilmember Henry as vice mayor.
I make the motion to appoint Councilmember Tosca Henry as vice mayor.
I second that.
Okay. Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes, thank you.
And look, you unified, and you unified us again.
Okay, next is...
You didn't have a choice.
Yeah, not really. Claims and adjustments?
Move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Okay, second?
Second.
Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Matthews seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The new vice mayor?
Not yet. Let me leave the door.
Motion is approved.
Okay.
I move adjourn.
Don't you need an official? No? Weren't you stepping down, or no?
I don't, yeah, but it's the end of the month. I'm no longer, there's nothing, that'll come up at the next regular council meeting.
Oh, okay, I just remembered, Tim, and when you guys did it, it was done up here, and then you, when you and Randy Garrison stepped down, you stepped down from the dais. I was in the audience, that's why I remember.
Okay.
No, she's not sworn in yet as vice mayor, so it'll be, it's just, okay.
Okay, so we had a motion to adjourn and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Good night.